All right. I would like to, um, welcome everyone this evening. I'll call this meeting to order of the, um, Monday, October 19th, 2020 School Board Meeting. It is 6:02 and we'll begin this meeting and call this meeting to order. We'll take roll call, beginning with Ms. Janie Fair. Uh, Ms. Jones?
Present.
Ms. Tower?
Present.
Mr. Bryant?
Present.
Mr. Christensen?
I'm here.
Mr. Derrick?
Here.
And Chair is here. All seven board members are present for this evening's School Board Meeting. And with that, we'll go ahead and rise and share the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, everyone. And I'd like to also extend a warm welcome to all of our visitors this evening. We've got a a full screen in front of us, so thank you all for joining us tonight. Um, I've asked Ms. Fair to share our vision this evening.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The mission of the Red Wing Public Schools is to educate and inspire all students as they realize their full potential and become respectful, responsible, and productive citizens.
Thank you. There is, uh, the agenda that was listed in our board packet that you have hopefully in front of you. Are there any changes to the agenda?
Was there something added today by Lisa? I don't recall what it was. Is that included on the current agenda?
It is included on the current agenda. That's business item 4.1, Quest Learning Together. That was also on our board packet. That is posted.
I'll make a motion, Jim, make a motion to approve the agenda.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, the agenda, uh, motion made by Jim, seconded by Holly. Any other discussion? All right, then we'll take a roll call vote, starting with Ms. Jones.
Aye.
Ms. Tower?
Aye.
Mr. Bryant?
Aye.
Mr. Christensen?
Aye.
Mr. Derrick?
Aye.
Ms. Fair?
Aye.
And Chair votes aye, so the agenda passes 7-0. Uh, the first item on our agenda is, um, just to call your attention to our educational plan. And so that's always listed in every board packet, um, to keep us focused on our strategic directions and goals for the district moving forward. And with that, the next item on our agenda is recognitions and upcoming events. Who would like to share something?
Uh, Pam, if I could, uh, share something, uh, that, uh, a community event sponsored by Red Wing Arts. Uh, Wing Huey, uh, will be conducting a community workshop on October 28th at 7:00 PM. Uh, Wing is the gentleman who worked with our eighth grade perspective students first quarter and, you know, in subsequent quarters on perspectives and, uh, learning about your own biases, um, as we, uh, live our lives. And, um, so we're taking that work, but expanding it to the whole community, well, at least Red Wing Arts is. And so again, that, uh, is on October 28th at 7:00 PM. It's a Zoom call and people can access information, uh, from Red Wing Arts.
Great, thank you. Does anybody else have any recognitions or upcoming events?
Um, I would just like to recognize how hard people have been working and how people have really tried to keep the positivity going, um, in all areas of the school district. So, um, lots of people are sharing on Facebook about how they're trying to help each other. And so given that it's extremely stressful and COVID numbers are going up and people are all in flux, um, I still see a lot of positivity coming from people in the district trying to put on a happy face. And it's very difficult, so I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you, Holly. Bracken, thank you. Nice to see you.
Yeah, nice to see you all too. Um, so we are starting to enter the last push of our first quarter. I believe there's about three weeks left. And so we're starting to enter that final push and starting to prepare for our transition in the next quarter. And then next week is the beginning of homecoming week. So that is still happening this year and student body's really happy about that. Um, tomorrow, Student Council will be meeting discussing dress-up days, but on Monday, there is homecoming coronation where the homecoming court will be announced and then king and queen will be declared. So that's what's going on next week. And, um, just wanted to thank all the teachers. They've been amazing as always. They've been working really hard, meeting students where they're at. And, uh, I think that's everything.
Awesome. And I think, uh, cross-country just ended, is that correct?
Yep, cross-country just ended. There, uh, I think that we, there's going to be some sort of a banquet, some, some sort of closing thing, but they're not sure what it is yet.
Yeah. And I know tennis ended last week, soccer, girls swim and dive. They should all be wrapping up right now and we're switching into, um, football and volleyball. Uh, we've had a couple of games under our belts already, so that's good. I'm sure we'll hear a little bit more from Mr. Hartman, uh, in a little bit. Any other recognitions and upcoming events? Okay, seeing none, then we'll move on the agenda to public comment. Uh, I have two public comment submissions. Um, and I'll just remind, uh, the public comment that we allow three minutes per person. Uh, we'll listen to the public comment, but, uh, we don't discuss the topic at the meeting. The superintendent and/or board chair may provide a response outlining steps the district has taken or will address uh, for those concerns. And a summary of the school district's actions in response to public comment will be provided to the school board. Individuals submitting public comment and/or the public at a later date as appropriate. And we expect the comments remain respectful and appropriate and not identify any current or former students, their families, or staff members by name. And so the first public comment I have is, uh, Ross Lexfeld and Lisa Hansen from Everyhand Join. And I'll turn it over to both of you.
Thank you, Chair. Roll, members of the board. Uh, I'm Ross Lexfeld. I'm Chair of Everyhand Join Organization and father of two boys in the Red Wing Public School System. And I'm speaking to you this evening on behalf of Everyhand Join to show support for the continuance and educational data sharing agreements by the district. And you should have also received the letter of support I sent out on this topic last Friday. But just to give you a brief little background, Everyhand Join, our mission is to unite the Red Wing community to ensure every child is successful from cradle to career. And we have four values that guide us in our work and in our interactions. And they are shared community vision, collective impact, equity, and data-driven. So I'll focus on the value of data-driven. Uh, from our letter, Everyhand Join, we're a member of a nationwide movement that comes together to improve student outcomes using data and evidence-based decision-making. And all 70 communities of this movement, uh, they work closely with school districts to responsibly share and use data effectively in accordance with state and federal laws. And we know data is the key to well-rounded, informed decisions. Therefore, data transparency with collection, sharing, and use are vital to ensure the right to know and control how individual data is being protected, stored, used, and eventually discarded. Uh, we believe that education-related organizations are most effective when they use data to make decisions for educating students. And since Everyhand Joins inception back in 2012, uh, we believe this provides benefits to not only educators, but other partners throughout Red Wing such as nonprofit-serving organizations, government, and most importantly, children and families. Uh, all students deserve a great education, one that affords every opportunity for them to grow into knowledgeable and successful adults. We know that every student has a unique background, unique strengths, and a unique path to post-secondary education and a career. Everyone who has a stake in education needs the right data in the right format and at the right time to serve our students along those unique journeys. When students, parents, educators, and partners have the right information to make decisions, students do excel. Sharing data is one of the most powerful tools to inform, engage, and create opportunities for students along their education journey. And data helps us make connections that leads to insights, strategies, and improvements. When gathering, analyzing, and sharing data, we agree it is mandatory to follow the laws, principles, and policies of the federal and state levels and those of our district for privacy. Again, critical to supporting and improving outcomes for our youth in Red Wing is the approval of the educational data sharing agreements this evening. I'll take any questions you may have. Otherwise, thank you for your time.
If I could, uh, just jump in and, uh, first, Ross, thank you for your leadership of the partner table of Everyhand Join. Uh, Everyhand Join is a valuable partner, uh, not only with the school district, but also community organizations and the students of, of the community. So thank you uh, for that. Uh, you know, we, we probably won't go into any in-depth discussion now, uh, because, you know, it is a topic on the agenda, you know, coming up in a few minutes. And so I'm sure there'll be a robust discussion then. Um, and, uh, uh, but I, again, I thank you for, for all of your work on behalf of our students.
You're welcome. Thanks to your and your staff for your leadership during this challenging year as well.
Thank you, Ross, for joining us this evening and for your comments. The second public comment I have, uh, has been requested that I read it on his behalf. It is, uh, Matthew Kieske. He's the father of four and he lives on Spring Creek Road in Red Wing. And he is writing regarding the usage of facilities by outside organizations. He says, "I am writing to urge school board members and district administration to continue to allow non-school usage of sporting facilities of the district for athletic practice and competition. Participation in such extracurricular activities provides a valuable opportunity for our students to grow and learn while also contributing to their overall health and well-being. Children learn such qualities as leadership, teamwork, personal accountability, and discipline, just to name a few. Additionally, I would also encourage the allowance of parents and guardians and spectators at any practice or competition. Often, parents assist with younger participants in gearing up and also can provide constructive feedback to their children if they are able to observe. Other teams will be less likely to want to play our teams if they have to drive their student athletes 45 minutes to Red Wing and sit in the car and wait for them to be done. Please do not miss another opportunity to provide the children of the district a great opportunity to learn and grow to their potential." And it's signed, Matt Kieske.
Well, thank you for that, um, uh, message, Matt, and just let you know that uh, facility use by outside groups is on the agenda for, uh, this meeting. And so once again, we'll have another discussion among, uh, board members at that time. But thank you for the feedback.
Yes, thank you very much. I have no other public comment at this time, and so we'll move our agenda along to the activities update by, uh, Mr. Paul Hartman.
Good evening, everybody. Thanks for having me. Uh, I apologize in advance if you hear my, uh, teeth chatter a little bit. I'm, uh, currently supervising a, uh, B-Squad and watching as a parent, a B-Squad football game. Uh, so it's a little cold up here in the booth, but, uh, there's a lot of winger faithful out here watching our, our young men, so. Uh, it's good to be with you here tonight. I've been asked to speak about activities, but specific towards the new spectator policies that were announced by the Minnesota Department of Health, uh, and thus signed into, uh, by the Minnesota State High School League. Uh, I could spend some time talking about the great, uh, fall seasons we've had and, and cross-country, swim, soccer, tennis. Uh, I know we got our fall playlists kicking off next Wednesday and Thursday as part of homecoming week. We got math league, getting ready to go as well as knowledgeable and other activities, but, uh, just, uh, spectator policies as designed by the Minnesota Department of Health. As you are probably aware, uh, we can currently have 250 people at an outdoor venue, uh, currently here this evening at the B-Squad football game. We're just under 100, I believe. Our owners at the front gate have told me. But we can get up to 250. And so as our football district, uh, has outlined, each, um, each team is allotted 125 tickets. Uh, there's, it suggests that we have separate entrances and we sit in, in different, uh, locations. Um, we were able to purchase some bleacher keepers, sort of dividers in the bleachers to remind people of social distancing. They have some, uh, nice winger logos on them, uh, thanks to our, our facilities management team as well as our groundspeople for putting those up. We also put those up in the gym and we are, uh, in the process of putting those up in the arena as well. So as it sits right now, keep in mind that this just came out, uh, not too long ago. We were to put a policy in place uh, as a conference and then as a local district. So we are allowing two spectators, um, per participant for volleyball, uh, which is indoors right now. And we allowed this for our Big Nine virtual swim meets this past weekend. Uh, so for example, tomorrow night, when we have a home volleyball game against Winona, uh, the ninth graders in the B-Squad will play at the same time. There'll be two, uh, spectators per participant. When that game is over, those, uh, families are asked to, to leave the premises. Uh, the JV, uh, and varsity parents will then come in, uh, two spectators once again per participant. When that game is over, they are asked to leave. Uh, we made a district decision to not allow away fans for ninth grade, uh, as well as our seventh and eighth grade matches, uh, just because we could not ensure proper social distancing for our home venue. Uh, we are streaming those events for our away fans. Uh, if they would choose to watch a, a ninth grade A-game, uh, we're gonna have a seventh and eighth grade volleyball match against Albert Lee on Thursday. Those fans will be allowed, uh, the streaming devices to watch their, uh, daughters. Uh, and so really it comes down to working with our COVID team here at the high school as well as the district level. Uh, Shonda, this Jorgensen is, is comfortable with our plan. Uh, the dividers that we see out here at Marshall Field are in place at, uh, Sanju, Sanju Gymnasium for our, uh, for our volleyball season upcoming. And we anticipate possibly some changes to this, uh, as we get into basketball, but, uh, nothing has been specified at the state level at this time. I'd be happy to, uh, to take any questions.
Paul, can you remind people how they can go ahead and get, um, the streaming, uh, opportunities?
Yeah, or, which is another huge shout-out to our community. Uh, our district, um, our activities has a YouTube page now. That link is at GoWingers. And so all of our, our home, um, volleyball matches, B-Squad, JV, varsity, at least right now, we're working out plans as we get into our other winter sports. But that is going to be found on our Winger Activities YouTube page. Um, our lower levels, which are going on simultaneously as our, uh, the games or the matches on the main court, those are on Facebook Live, the Winger Activities page on Facebook. So that's the way it sits for volleyball right now, just because, uh, the spectators are limited. For example, we're not streaming football tonight because anybody that, uh, for the most part, anybody that wants to come can come. So, um, long answer, short answer would be district, uh, Winger Activities YouTube page and our Winger Activities Facebook page.
Thank you. Janie, you had your name in the queue?
Yep. Thank you. Hey, Paul, you know, I, I think it's great that we're obviously playing and we're getting some spectators in, but I know I've had several parents come up to me about the frustration with the younger levels as far as watching and such. So, um, can you tell us a little bit more? Do you see any movement on that of just like as far as those seventh, eighth graders and the ninth graders? I mean, I guess why, why is that, why is the state high school league seeing that as different other than just that varsity sports, you know, are more important or, you know, more celebrated, I guess?
Uh, are you speaking to our home families or visiting families?
Home families.
Uh, well, to be honest with you, it was, um, when the Department of Health came out with the guidelines, we didn't, uh, feel comfortable allowing, uh, home families for that very first match, which now we're allowing two spectators per participant regardless of level. We're just not allowing visiting fans to come into our gym. And that's really a district-by-district case. Uh, right now in the Big Nine, it's about splits in terms of who's allowing visiting fans. Uh, and it's based on the social distancing guidelines and the guidelines outlined by the Department of Health. But for our home, uh, winger fans, it's two spectators per participant, just as outlined by the Department of Health. I think early on, early on, we did not allow, because we weren't comfortable with our plan. And that was literally 48 hours after the guidelines came out. And we actually, if I go back to our Austin, you're speaking probably of our Austin volleyball match on Saturday, last Saturday, um, we allowed varsity and JV parents as a trial run to make sure that we kind of knew what we were doing. And then once we established that, we kind of got it figured out. Now we're opening up to everybody. So, um, we feel good so far about, uh, the plan and the processes by which our, our workers are establishing those, on those evenings.
Good. Thank you so much. Thanks for clarifying that. So that's great.
What's the score, Paul?
Uh, do you want to know, Pam? We're getting better. We're getting better, Pam. It's, uh, it's a chilly night. It's wet. Um, but we're getting better.
Okay, good. That's what I want to hear. Heidi, were you about to say something? I'm sorry if I cut you off.
Yeah, just briefly, it occurred to me, um, Paul, what's been the impact on increased attendance, um, now that we're letting fans in with the cleaning labor, the custodial piece about how do we sanitize after? Is that significant or are we just kind of feeling our way through this or?
Well, I can tell you tomorrow will be our first, um, home event in which we have multiple, uh, levels participating. So the last one was simply the JV and varsity trial run. Uh, you know, everything will be, um, will be cleaned after just like any other events. I know I was with Mr. Hartnik the evening after the, the Austin game and he was very quick to, to get things sanitized and cleaned up uh, before he left that evening. So there's no, there's no doubt, Heidi, that it will add some, uh, increased time and increased labor on our, um, on our maintenance department. And, but I also know that our, our families throughout our, the community as well as throughout the state are grateful to have the opportunity to, to attend these events.
Okay, thanks.
And Pam, if it's okay, I just thank you, Paul, for all we did. And I think it's really important, that last statement part about not only is it important for the mental health of student athletes to keep on playing and stuff, but I know as a parent, watching my kids play, uh, run cross-country, that it's amazing how much it felt just, you know, to have that as something to, that was normal and stuff. So I think it's important to not only think about the students, but what that means to the parents and our community in general. Um, so I think whatever we can do in a safe way is great. So thank you for all your work, Paul, because it was great this fall to to be able to watch our athletes in, in safe circumstances. So I appreciate all the work on it.
Well, what's great about it is, you know, we, we get a plan and we kind of develop it together and then, you know, propose it to our groundspeople and they're on it, you know, putting up the bleacher keepers right away and, and, um, Al and Carol, as soon as we, we needed to get that thing ready to go for Austin, they were on it. So we worked together on it. So just a testament to the people in our district and the people in our community that want to give back and, uh, and see our kids participate.
Well stated, Janie. Thank you. And thank you, Mr. Hartman, for being here this evening and giving us an update. Any last questions for Mr. Hartman before he goes back to cheer on our wingers? All right, seeing none, I'll, uh, I'll move us on to our next agenda item.
If I could mention one more, I'm sorry, one more thing. We did, I just want to mention that, uh, ran the numbers this morning and we had nearly 400 kids participates, um, either this fall or in this bridge season of volleyball and football. Um, so, you know, numbers are very solid. It was great to see so many kids. Obviously, we're always looking for more, but I know our participants appreciate the board's support on, uh, what they view as part of the educational process, being involved in extracurricular activities. So thank you.
Holly, go ahead.
Uh, thank you. I, I remembered what I was gonna say. It took me a minute. Um, you know, it's, it's hard for me to see all the pictures of kids on Facebook with all of their parties that they're attending right now, 10, 12 kids deep with no masks and different things celebrating. If there was a way that we could say, okay, hold off on the parties at home so your families can go to your event through your activities, that would make me feel a lot better. But I think that for families that fear that some families aren't taking it as serious, it's really difficult for us to navigate, um, how that, how that can be for kids that want to participate in the sport or the activity, but their family isn't necessarily in agreement. And then their child is put up to being exposed because they're a participant when other family members don't feel it's as, as serious. And I'm asking one way or the other. I'm just saying, I notice those things. And so opening up this place to families, I think, is critical. I just prefer the way to say, if you're on an activity or a sport, hold off on the parties with all of the kids. That's my personal preference. But I do recognize that there are a lot of events going on outside of school that are out of our control, but it does impact what happens on the fields and in the auditoriums and in the stadiums. So just to be cognizant, but I do believe, Paul, that your team is doing everything this sport requires of us. So I want to give you kudos and the rest of your team.
Thank you.
Any other final comments? Okay, thanks, Paul. Thanks for joining us.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
You too.
Uh, next on our agenda is school board reports. And I'm just gonna go down the list here and starting with finance. Are there any updates from the finance committee this evening?
Nothing, uh, nothing of significance. We'll be, uh, discussing some contracts tonight, I guess. So that'll be the big update.
Okay. Operations Committee, anything to share this evening, updates?
No report.
Okay. Personnel?
I will echo that. We don't really have anything new. I think we're looking for some big guidance from our closed meeting tonight to discuss about kind of parameters with negotiations. So I think that's the main thing as we proceed with multiple things. And then I, I do want to make sure that we're all aware, which I'm sure we are, but that, um, the MOU is on the consent agenda tonight. So if people have any questions, but that was something we obviously worked on a couple of meetings. So, yep.
Uh, legislative and policy, any, anybody have anything they'd like to share about their meeting this evening or any updates?
Well, I know we have a long meeting ahead, so I'll keep it brief, but you will have a number of documents coming before you, um, either probably later next month. Um, an activities handbook. So we got, uh, an activities and athletics from Paul Hartman. Um, something that we've been lacking for a while, so I think that's gonna do the district some good. There'll be administrative procedures, school board procedures. We're trying to put some, um, tips, some rules, some, you know, pieces that school board members need to know, I think, especially with an eye toward, um, new folks coming on. And, um, we still, I urge, again, your new people will, um, want to understand what that constitutional amendment will be. And then there's a Title IX policy that's somewhat controversial and, but we need to adopt it. It's already in effect. I know there's some, um, struggles with what it actually means, um, even from MSBA, so we'll, we'll be reviewing that.
Okay, thank you. Uh, other, MSBA, do you have anything, Heidi, that you want to share about that, updates?
Yeah, um, MSBA is really heavily encouraging that all of our new people, um, would, uh, newly elected folks would attend those Phase One and Phase Two workshops in December. This is a banner year for school board elections. They're expecting anywhere between 400 and 500 new people. So, um, I think it is good planning if they can get that training in, in December. And Lisa Steggerda has all that information and times for when we need to activate that. But I just wanted to say that publicly, um, to help those folks, um, get acclimated as soon as possible. And then the leadership conference in January. Um, MSBA has pushed back their office opening until January 7th. So again, just, um, from an employer's perspective, you know, what is it we need to do to keep one another safe? And if you can meet in a virtual environment, they're continuing to do so. Um, and again, I've mentioned that other, other workplaces are doing that. Um, I think the big news, um, if you didn't have a chance to attend the Tom Melcher workshop, he is semi-retired. Um, he worked for 40 years at the Department of Education here in Minnesota. So MSBA granted him a lifetime achievement award. Uh, but he gave a presentation that you can access still on the MSBA website about, again, that Public Education Finance Working Group. And some large picture, um, pieces that I think would help set the framework. There's been a downward drift over the last 20 years in state public education financing. Um, we've lost 10% of our buying power and that leads to inequities across districts. So for instance, the state used to provide 70% of a school district's, um, general fund. Now we're standing at 53% of state funding funds are general funds and it's drifting downwards to 51%. What that means is What that means is, and that's since 2003, that if you're only getting 50% of what you need from the state, then you're turning to your local resources. You are turning to local operating referendum. That then starts to create inequities, because our tax base could be very different from Leroy Ostrander on the Iowa border. They are not going to be able to generate as much money for their kids. So, right now, some districts go out, and they are after $864 per pupil additionally. Other districts cannot pass a local operating referendum, so they have $0. So, you start to build those disparities. And the more the financing from the state gets out of alignment with what districts need, the more inequities you create. And of course, we're having discussions, new discussions about equity, what does it mean? Well, this is equity in the financial world across the state. The new formula, they hope will expect will provide 80% of what districts need to run their schools. And then, again, this approach, waiting for the end of each legislative session every other year to decide what your budget may or may not look like, this would build unpredictability, because they're also suggesting to add in a two-year inflationary factor to the general education formula. There are some special pieces, and I think there's also pay attention to extended time funding, because that's supposed to address the achievement gap with our struggling learners. And they want to increase that and bump that up significantly. Other pieces that I think would benefit Red Wing in this whole finance discussion is Q comp availability to all districts. Now, the money is capped. So, that's one of the biggest inequities, our lobbyist said, is some districts get that extra money for their staff, others do not. So, again, some get it, some don't. There's winners, there's losers. The Safe Schools, they want to double that. Safe Schools money funds things like counselors, social workers, mental health pieces, along with physical safety measures at schools. American Indian Education Aid would advance significantly. It would almost quadruple. And they feel that that's equitable. So, that'll be a huge change in funding. And then, there would be some concurrent enrollment aid. Again, I think Red Wing Public Schools would benefit. But that's all I want to say about that. But please, if you have a moment, it's about an hour and a half. Tom goes over my head sometimes, too. But I think it's worth, again, those board members that are going to be at the table next year, start wading into that, because you'll want to be part of that discussion. They're going to be presenting to this year's legislature. The timing's horrible, because, you know, the money's horrible. But it's a discussion they need to have, because our state's public finance funding is getting out of alignment with what needs are for that.
Thank you, Heidi. I think we all received that link today in our email of being able to access that recorded session. So, it might be something to put on our to-do list here in the next week or two.
Yeah. This is Mike. I would really highly recommend that. Tom Melcher is very easy to follow for financial stuff like that. He does a great job. And, you know, I've been to several of his presentations, and it's always informative, as well as it can be entertaining in a dry sense. But definitely, you guys should all be checking that out, because somebody's going to have to be there. And it ain't going to be me. And I also wanted to mention that, you know, the school finance thing. And then, when districts have to request money from their taxpayers on a referendum, that referendum amount is capped. So, you can only get so much. For instance, Red Wing is very near its cap. We were very lucky to do that. We had a great promotion event, and we had a great turnout for people supporting schools. But again, that's, you know, I'm surprised that it's only 10% that we've lost. I figured it was much closer to 20% in value. Anyway, go see Tom Melcher. Thanks.
Thank you, Mike. Any other school board reports that we'd like to highlight this evening? All right. Then Superintendent Anderson, I'll turn it over to you for administrative reports.
Thank you, Pam. Let me find the right section here. Rick did a nice job outlining upcoming homecoming events. I know it's partly weather-dependent. So, more information will be going out to students and parents from the high school. We did have a request to offer à la carte milk for in-person students in grades K through 6. And so, Brent Luxfold made those arrangements recently. Paul already covered information about spectators at the State High School League events. Transportation Department has looked at ridership counts, and they're making some adjustments with families to provide more transportation services. Currently, they're looking at offering transportation to those kids who would have qualified for hazardous transportation in past years. And so, they are making arrangements for those families. So, for example, families on the other side of Highway 61, you know, like by McDonald's, you know, would likely qualify for that service. So, they're making those changes now. Sometime in mid-November, we'll look at the ridership counts again after making those changes to see if we can start lowering the walking zones. And it's not as easy as I had thought, because they have the bus capacity limits. Some of our kids are leaving distance to come back into the school district at the end of first quarter, at the end of the semester. And so, that impacts a number of areas, too. And, you know, so they're looking at all of that before they start lowering the walking zones. So, I'm anxiously awaiting making some of those changes, because I see the buses like all of you do, and clearly, they are under capacity. So, we'll keep working on that. I can't remember if I mentioned that we are planning to do a survey of the kids who open roll out of our district. And I have a meeting with Don Wetterin this week to see if the community ed staff could help with that. And the goal is to complete that survey of 200 families in November and/or December. We want to be cognizant that people are busy during the holiday times. There's a lot of COVID-related stuff going on. So, you know, we'll see if that timing changes. The last thing we want to do is offend, you know, people by making a phone call to conduct a survey. And so, we just want to do it in the right way at the right time. I know that's been a priority for school board members for several years. So, thank you for your persistence in following up with that. I included an update as far as the online school approval, and that's related to the use of edgenuity. And Sherri Johnson has taken that lead. And so, as soon as the Minnesota Department of Education provides GCD with their official response, Sherri will pass it on to us. So, that is still in the works. And then, finally, a bit of good news. Mick Wenland and Kayanne Quarter, I believe they presented either last week or this week at a virtual national convention about our flight paths program, and especially with Kayanne's experience in the healthcare path. And not surprisingly, Kayanne stole the show. She's a very articulate person, and shared her experiences and explained how, you know, that experience changed her path, you know. And that's, you know, just because you choose a flight path, you know, you're successful if you decide to pursue that path or not. You know, the goal is to get people exposed to different possibilities, so they can make lifelong decisions. And then, finally, just a reminder, I do include in every board agenda kind of an update on the implementation of our education plan. This is for work, most of the work completed since July 1 of this year. And you can see, it's a lengthy document. And I think it's a testimony that our staff has been working diligently to fulfill our operating levy promises, our educational plan promises, our LEE learning plan promises. And I think if you read through it, you'll be quite impressed with what you see. And that's all I have, unless there are some questions.
Any questions for the superintendent? Oh, Janie, go ahead.
Yep. I just was wondering, Carson, where are we at with keeping up the numbers as far as rates and stuff with COVID in the county? Are you just emailing those to us? Or I guess, I thought we were going to get to where they were in the school board packet every month or so.
Yeah. My apologies. Well, I'll talk to Lisa, so that she can download it every Thursday from the state and start sharing that on a regular basis. And probably the best thing to do is just to email it to you every week, so that you have that down. And right now, we're just, the Goodyear County rates are just under 20. 20 is the threshold where the recommendation from the state is to go into hybrid learning for elementary kids. And so, Goodyear County is right below that. And just a reminder is that we set up our hybrid plan to be the same as our in-person plan. We've already built in the social distancing guidelines and some of the other precautions that other schools will need to do as they move into hybrid. So, we're in a good situation there. But obviously, you know, we're concerned with the whole community as you see those COVID rates rising. And they're concerned to us. There's no doubt.
And are we ever going to have a discussion? I know we can't, I don't know if a discussion's the right word. But, you know, I know you had made the point that obviously, when you look at numbers and you know solely, when we talk about all this data, it goes into it. But, you know, as far as medically, have we seen any outbreaks in our schools, or how are things going? Because I think it's important to continually be, you know, at least talking about that in general.
Yeah, we have had some individuals who have tested positive for COVID. I don't have a particular number, but it's under a threshold that's being shared, you know, by the state now for all schools. And I will say that, and I think it was maybe Holly who mentioned this earlier in the meeting, we're concerned about interactions all the time, everywhere. But we're really concerned about those interactions happening outside of school hours. It's kids meeting at night, going to have coffee, parties in the weekend, hanging out downstairs when it's cold outside. And that's where COVID spreads most readily. And so, you know, like Holly said, we all have to be concerned about that, encourage one another not to gather in places like that. If we want to be in school, if we want to continue our gatherings, you know, even small town or small gatherings out, you know, inside school and outside of school, we have to stop that. We have to take the advice of our healthcare professionals very seriously. Wear masks, stay socially distanced. And for Pete's sake, we need hold off on those gatherings, because that's where it's happening. So, but, you know, I don't think there have been any transmissions here at school. I might be mistaken, because I didn't see Joni today. Our primary concern would be people interacting outside of school. Does that answer your question, Janie?
It does.
In a general sense?
Pretty much. I think we just have to, you know, for our public and those that watch this or look back at agenda items, I just think that's important for parents to know where we're at and somehow have it be very clear, so that they know why we are in the situation we are now. And, you know, when hopefully we are able to move, we have, we see that change. So, I think that's what I'm most, you know, wanting to make sure that we present as a district.
Yeah. And like I say, I'll have Lisa send that to board members. And then, she can include a link. I just clicked on it now, because it's available from the Minnesota Department of Health. So, anyone can take a look at that report. But still, we can send it to board members every week, just so that you have it in your inbox.
Do we have it, though, on our website, so parents can look at kind of where we're at? Like, I just kind of bring that up, because again, I think we just need to be able to make sure parents kind of know why we're making the decisions we are and why we're staying where we are currently. So, just an idea.
What we could do is include a link on our website to the Department of Health update. And then, we don't have to change the document every time. We can just give the link, so that they get the latest information right away. So, I'll have Lisa send that link to Jill, so we can include it.
Yep. I think that sounds greater. And the district newsletter, too. I think just whatever we can do to make sure parents know where to go for that. Thank you.
Any other questions for Superintendent Anderson? Thank you for that update. Next on our agenda, moving along, is the consent agenda. Is there anything that you would like to highlight on that or pull at this time, anybody?
Pam Cher?
Yep.
I think it's number six.
The agreements and MOUs?
Agreement with our business management system. Well, I'd like to just pull that one item. Do we have to pull all six? I don't, all items on number six?
The package.
That's not right. But I will do that.
Okay. Anything else? All right. Then I will look for a motion to approve the consent agenda on minus number six.
So, moved, Heidi Jones. Janie Neal, second.
Moved by Heidi, seconded by Janie. Any other discussion? So, the motion on the table is a consent agenda minus number six, and we'll take a roll call vote, starting with Ms. Tower.
Aye.
Mr. Bryant?
Aye.
Mr. Christensen?
Aye.
Mr. Derrick?
Aye.
Ms. Fair?
Aye.
Ms. Jones?
Aye.
And Chair votes aye. So, the consent agenda minus number six passes. All right. So, we'll bring up number six for discussion.
I'll start the discussion, Pam Cher, if I may.
Yep.
Thank you. I only want to talk about the school management services. The other three I am fine with. So, when we make a motion tonight, I would ask that we break the three out that are below there separately from the school management system agreement. So, my point is, it's now up to $113,000 and change for approximately 40, 50% of the time, four days in the office, and/or four days, part-day days in the office, and the fifth working appears to be remotely or somewhere else, which is understandable there. I just think $113,000, we need to start, have some serious discussion about getting back to what we want to do about a finance person. I understand I said finance person, not a finance director. I said finance person. So, I realize we can get out of this within so many days and all that. But I said, we just keep bringing it, it just keeps going up. Next year, it's 3% increase for the next two and three years on that. So, I'm just not in favor of it, because I think we need to, we're at the point where we have all this going on, that we need to have a full-time finance person in the school district. So.
Arlen, you're in the queue?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm glad Jim pulled it, because I was ready to pull it for the same reason, basically. I'm not sure what finance person, finance director, whatever it is. But I don't want to see us committed to three years, because I've always felt we should have our own employee being in charge of our finances. So, going forward, I'd like, I am going to vote against number six, if this is all together, and it's nothing to do with the other three. I would like to offer a suggestion that we maybe do an approval of item six minus the school management services contract, so I could have a separate vote. But I don't know what your feeling is on that is.
I thought, I think I kind of said that, maybe not as, correct the same way, but that's what I meant too.
You're correct, Jim.
Okay.
Carson, do you want to address that?
Uh, yeah, just a couple of things. First, um, uh, the $113,690 charge, uh, is actually for, uh, two different people. Uh, first of all, business management and support services, that's just under $80,000. And then also we have a district accountant, um, service, uh, agent, uh, and that cost is about $34,000. So if you add those two up, it's, uh, just under $114,000. Uh, but just want to let you know that it is for two people. Now, I think Jim summarized it really well in terms of, you know, time commitment, uh, for Jackie in terms of in-office or remote. You know, the district accountant is here, uh, somewhere between, uh, one and two days, uh, per week. So I don't want to give the false impression that, you know, it's two full-time people, uh, but it does pay for those two different positions. Uh, in terms of the, um, the actual vote, um, I've always been under the understanding that, um, that an item can be pulled. It doesn't have to be the whole set of items, that it could just be one item in that. But, um, I know past practice has been here that we've, you know, kind of pulled the whole set. Uh, and so I'll, I'll just contact MSBA to see, you know, what, what best practice is so that we can kind of review that together. Uh, and as far as, um, you know, what we approve or what group, um, I think it really depends on whoever makes the motion. So someone could make a motion to approve all four or just one of them or three of them. Uh, and then of course we could have multiple motions, um, as we kind of, uh, review those items. Lisa, that's, that's my perspective.
Uh, and I would agree, that's mine too, but.
Arlen, did you want to add something to that?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to approve item number six minus the school management services LLC agreement. And then we'll take that up separately. That's my motion.
Second.
Made by Arlen, seconded by Jim. Any other discussion? So the motion on the table is to approve number six minus the school management services LLC agreement for business management and support services. We will vote on that, starting with Mr. Bryant.
Aye.
Mr. Christensen?
Aye.
Mr. Derrickx?
Aye.
Uh, Ms. Fair?
Aye.
Ms. Jones?
Aye.
Ms. Tower?
Aye.
And Chair votes aye. So number six minus the school management services passes, seven zero. All right, further discussion on the school management services. Anyone?
Pam, I sent you a Q.
I'm sorry?
I sent my name in.
Oh, okay, go ahead.
Yeah, uh, first off, I want to say this is nothing against Jackie or school management services in my, uh, as far as I'm concerned, I think they're good people. I think Jackie's done a tremendous job. My whole thing is I want to, and I thought we were going to get someplace where we would maybe have a more bigger discussion about where we want to go on this, uh, finance manager, director, or whatever it is as our own employee. And I don't want to commit to three years. So my objection is for the length of time because I, I think we need to address that in the next year. That's all I got on for comment.
Uh, Janie, go ahead.
I kind of echo what Arlen said. You know, I'm interested in hearing more about whether this is a cost savings or how much it's going to cost us in the long run, but, um, it seems like we have to have this as a different discussion I have on the agenda. And I know we've tried in, in past times, will there be the HR, um, you know, HR plan or such, but, um, yeah, three years seems like quite a long time to commit to something. But I guess that mean if we approved it tonight after a year, could we change it or after six months? I, I guess I'm just very concerned with our finances at this point and, um, we're getting lots of requests from other things and I just, you know, I don't necessarily know how we're going to fit this in with, with other needs in the district.
Uh, Heidi?
Uh, I I have, having worked under another structure, um, I think we're getting the value that we need. I have no reason to, um, uh, question whether we're getting what we pay for. Um, I think another arrangement actually would cost us more money and that's the other arrangement I've worked under because we've always had that, um, additional accounting piece, um, but we have paid more to fill in a financial position in the past. And, and actually, you know, I, I think the reports, um, that we're getting are very helpful. Um, we're willing to make adjustments to those and take feedback on that, um, and, and give feedback to, um, school management services to make some changes or include other information or package it differently. So I kind of like the flexibility that we have right now. Um, and I still think your three-year contract, as I think others have pointed out, also allow that flexibility if we should, um, see that we need something different. So I, I like what we have and I have no reason to mistrust this arrangement. Thanks.
Mike?
Yeah, I think if we, well, I know if we were to try and get our own person in, it would cost us considerably more, uh, not just in salary but benefits. Uh, they're providing a lot of additional services on top of, uh, what we're getting in the, uh, finance department. Uh, I think this point in time and even into the next year is a really bad time to be trying to change something out. And if, if Janie's concerned about finances, that's, I mean, this is a no-brainer that you stick with this. Uh, but, but really we've got so many more important things to focus on right now when we've got someone who's been with us for a long time, doing a great job explaining things clearly when we have questions, coming up with, uh, the answers that we need. Uh, I, it's a really bad time to be looking for somebody else when we've got so many more important things to be doing as a school district. So I would, uh, I think it's a good idea to keep this three years. Maybe it's a long time. I don't think a three-year contract is outrageous at all. And, uh, they've been doing a great job, so I don't see any reason to stop it. Thanks.
Carson?
Uh, yeah, just a, a couple of things here. Uh, first of all, you know, if we did discontinue the SMS contract, uh, we would not be able to contract with Jackie, uh, because she has a non-compete clause. Uh, at least that's my understanding. Uh, so just, uh, to make you aware of that. And I, I think everyone on the call, uh, appreciates, you know, the work that Jackie does for the district. And so we would be losing out on that, uh, if we make a change. Uh, I think Jim mentioned this earlier, uh, there is a termination, uh, clause in the contract. It's, uh, under Article Two, Section Two. And so if the school district gives a 60-day notice, then, then we can end the contract. So I wouldn't be worried about the length of the contract because we can, we can make a change, you know, within that three-year period. And then finally with cost, uh, you know, right now for Jackie's services, we're spending about $80,000. And, um, you know, I would be very surprised if we could find someone at a salary, uh, and with benefits at, um, you know, at $80,000. Uh, I'd be very surprised, especially with somebody, uh, with the skill level, uh, that Jackie has. I mean, she's phenomenal. She does great work. She's very efficient. She's very effective and she gets the, the work done for us. Now, with all that being said, um, I, um, you know, I, I hear, uh, board members and I, um, and I, I think Janie has always said, hey, we got to look at options, always look at options. And so I do think the personnel committee, uh, should continue to look at some of these positions that we've talked about for years. Uh, at the last personnel committee meeting, we heard a proposal for special ed, um, one or two special ed coordinators. Uh, and so, you know, we listened to that, we're, we're taking that in. And I do think this should be in the queue. Uh, and, uh, if we could come up with some options for at least the board, uh, to consider, um, then I, I think I owe that to you, um, uh, over the next few months. And so we'll do that. But I got to be open and honest with you. You know, I'm confident that it would cost more. So, um, I just wanted to, to be forthright with that and, but at the same time, we got to look at the options and just see where, where things land.
Uh, Jim?
Thank you, Madam Chair. A good discussion, as always. I'll say, take it from a different angle. Uh, $113,600, I'm just using that number. So 114, whatever you want to use. I use 113.6. If, if I'm correct here, and I could be off a touch, we, we're getting, uh, 1,456 hours we're paying for, for the two people that are supplying a service for the Red Wing School District at a cost of $113,600 or at $78 an hour. I think, I think for $113,000, we can find somebody to handle the finances for our, our district. So I'll just share that out there as to, we could gain 624 hours by hiring somebody full-time that we clear, currently are not paying for. Jackie do a nice job? Sure, that's, it's zeroed against that. It's just how do we get somebody in-house to handle our finances? And if she is available, absolutely, we'd want to consider her. Uh, we have nothing to do about the, um, no compete, but, uh, it is, we need to look at something, um, because our finances are, do, are important. They drive us wherever we go. We just got done talking about the finances and the state and what they're paying and how less they're paying. So it is important for us to, uh, to get somebody on board to handle our finances because that is what drives the ship, so to speak, as we go down the road. We talk every meeting about finances and we're just afraid to start exploring other options. So thank you for your time. Thanks.
Go ahead, Carson. You're on mute.
Thank you. Uh, you know, Jackie is, 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 you know, we contract with SMS to, to provide the services and I'm, uh, very confident that Jackie spends, uh, more than half-time, uh, working with Red, uh, with Red Wing Public Schools. So I'm not sure if the hourly comparison is, is, uh, the best way to view this. Uh, the way I view this is that we're getting exceptional service. Uh, we're getting, uh, you know, Jackie as well as Amy. Uh, those are distinct, uh, responsibilities. Uh, I think for internal, the purposes of in, internal controls, I think it's essential that we have different people doing those responsibilities. Uh, and, you know, even when we, uh, had Brad, and Brad was a tirelessly hard-working person. Uh, but, you know, when he was working here, we also had, um, you know, some accounting support as well in terms of Jackie and Elaine. Uh, so I think we're, we're spending, uh, less money now than we were five years ago and even 10 years ago. Um, and, uh, and I'm proud of that fact that we have an efficient, effective business office.
Janie?
Um, I guess, I just wanted to bring up again, I, I just wrote an email to Carson to add this to our personnel committee agenda and maybe it is even just comparing what some like-minded districts do for their financial departments. So I just wanted to add that, that you have my commitment to make sure we work on it in the next couple of months before I leave. And I will make a motion to approve that agreement. I need to look at what the name is, but.
Uh, Mike will second that.
School Management Services Agreement.
Yeah, Mike will second that.
None. All right, motion to approve number, uh, six school management services LLC. I guess it's just that one piece of number six, SMS. Janie made the motion, Mike made the second. Any other discussion?
No, I, the only thing I'd add was I concur with Carson's assessment of the previous costs in that department. We've always had that additional accounting service and then we've had, um, the, uh, finance department position. So we are spending considerably less than what we used to.
Holly, yes, thanks.
Uh, yeah, Janie, will you read the full motion of what you're proposing? I got all in this weave, so I just want to know specifically what you're proposing.
Sure, I am making a motion to approve the agreement for school management services, the LLC agreement for business management and support services.
For how many years?
What's presented, the three-year term?
Whatever is presented, I believe it was the three years.
Three years.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
And remembering that that can be terminated at any time. And I appreciate, Janie, you, uh, I think the personnel committee being on the committee for the past three years, I know we've struggled. Every year we bring this up and we talk about it and we've looked at it and it's been on the HR, um, plan many, many times. So I think that what I'm hearing loud and clear is that we want to continue to bring this back to the HR plan and continue to look at this so that we make sure that if we are getting, um, the best services that our money can buy and what makes the best sense structurally and organizationally for our district. So, um, knowing that we have that clause that we can terminate at any time with some notice, I think is, is helpful. Makes me feel a little bit better that we can still keep working on this and continue to have great service at the meantime. So the motion on the table, uh, is to, uh, approve the school management services LLC agreement for business management and support services made by Janie, seconded by Mike.
Correct.
Uh, and we'll start the roll call vote with you, Mr. Christensen.
I would also remind that this is a, a professional service that we're hiring and this is what they do. So it's, it's very much their business to do a good job. So I will vote aye.
Mr. Derrickx?
No.
Ms. Fair?
Aye.
Ms. Jones?
Aye.
Ms. Tower? Ms. Tower?
I need a voice vote.
Sorry, I didn't know I was muted.
Oh.
You said no, okay. Mr. Bryant?
No.
And Chair votes aye. So that passes for three. All right, that ends the consent agenda. Resolutions? Uh, the resolution accepting donations and grants, Superintendent Anderson? Uh, we have, uh, one donation to acknowledge this, this evening. Uh, Sergeants gave a $250 donation for innovative learning. Can you explain what that is, Superintendent Anderson?
Well, I guess I'm already off mute, with mute. Um, you know, I think everyone knows, uh, Dave Lewin, Lewis of, uh, Sergeants Nursery. And, uh, he just made, uh, the $250 donation to the Innovative Learning Fund. And I believe that's the, the fund that, um, uh, provides, uh, money for our elementary schools, um, in lieu of the parent, um, fundraising groups that we've had in the past. So there's a lot of flexibility for the elementary principals on how to spend money in the Innovative Learning Fund. Uh, instead of paying, uh, money for some of the fundraisers that we have, uh, Sergeants Nursery just, uh, made the financial donation instead.
Well, thank you, Dave Lewis. Worked with Dave in the past, so thank you. I'll make the motion to accept that, uh, donation as presented.
Second.
Mike will second.
Motion made by Heidi, seconded by Mike. Thank you, Mr. Lewis. Any other discussion? All right, so in acceptance of that donation, we'll start with you, Mr. Derrickx.
Aye.
Ms. Fair?
Aye.
Ms. Jones?
Aye.
Ms. Tower?
Aye.
Mr. Bryant?
Aye.
Uh, Mr. Christensen?
Aye.
And Chair votes aye. So that passes seven to zero. Thank you. It always, uh, It always, uh, warms my heart when we get to that part of the, the evening, because, uh, we really couldn't do it without our great community partners, and we definitely thank all of, all of our partners financially and the people who volunteer and contribute to our district in, in financial and non-financial ways. We, it really takes a village of me. Thank you very much. Next on the, uh, agenda is the Quest Learning Together Letter. And, uh, Heidi, do you wanna share a little bit about how this came to be?
Sure. So I know we've all, we've mentioned, I think, a couple of times earlier this evening during the Board Member about our appreciation for staff members and all the hard work they've put in, um, and, and, uh, challenges to overcome to reopen schools this, um, fall. Um, so Mike and I put our heads together. We wanted to put together basically a, a big thank you letter. Um, and we, we wanted to, um, not to just say the words here, but to put it in print and put it out into the communities so that, um, everybody could kind of hear a little bit of the stories, um, that we asked for from staff about how things are going, um, how did you turn a positive into a negative? How did you overcome a challenge, help out your colleague? So, um, Mike and I put that together, and we've been working and collecting stories for, I don't know, I think it's been about three weeks. So I have to, um, thank the staff again, just, um, personally, because we, um, at, uh, made another ask of them to take time to share, um, something that we wanted to feature in, um, a letter to the community thanking them. So, um, I apologize for the late submission. We actually had it together last Thursday, but we had a miscommunication about how to, uh, who was going to email, uh, to the superintendent. So I apologize for that. Um, but I don't think there's anything in here that, um, um, is, is controversial. Um, so I hope you've had an opportunity, and we would like to, to look it over, and we would like to sign everybody's name to it. And so, um, I guess the way to do that is to publicly ask the Board to do that, and that's why we had to add it as an agenda item. So we can entertain any questions you might have, or Mike, I don't know if you wanna chip in, but this is our effort, and, um, we'd like to get it out there. So thank you.
Yeah, I'll just say it was, uh, it was a really great experience, and we did put a lot of effort into it. I was traveling and doing it in my car, talking to people, and, uh, well, my wife was driving. And, um, uh, just, it was so great to hear from these people, and, and they, they were happy to hear from us, from me, anyway. I don't know how they felt about Heidi, never know, but, uh, it really was a, a great experience, and everybody was so positive. Uh, you know, there were, I think we put in a little bit of negative. Some things are, some things are difficult out there. And, uh, we tried to acknowledge that in the letter too, maybe not quite as thoroughly as we could, but we were limited in how many words we could use. Uh, it's, it'll probably go in as a column, not as a letter. And, uh, it was just, you know, we wanted to know, how is the school opening going? Uh, what, did the planning go as you expected? Could it have been better? Uh, what would you have done differently? And really, every single person said the planning could not have been done any better. The only, the only caveat to that was, uh, maybe it would have been nice if we'd have known what the state wanted from us earlier. But there was always so many things changing, uh, just like they're still changing, only not quite as, uh, as good as we do now. But it, uh, everybody just gave great kudos to the district administration. And, uh, and then all on down the line. I mean, uh, Alan said that, uh, the janitors kind of took it upon themselves to really go into the cleaning and getting everything ready. And he felt like they made it, made the staff feel safer coming back to school, because they were so focused on doing a good job. The, the paras, uh, para-professionals were, you know, they have a difficult job. They've had to adapt to, everybody's had to adapt, but they've been shifted and pushed and shoved, and they're working hard to make everything work. The teachers at the, the elementary level are, are great. They're loving seeing the kids. The, uh, the five, six, and then the, going into the high school, uh, it's, it's a little bit more difficult for tho, that staff, because they do the, they do the online and the in-person, and that's been a real challenge for them, and I, I wanna, uh, acknowledge that and, uh, let them know that, you know, some of them feel like they haven't been able to do as good a job as they know that they can do. And I just wanna acknowledge and, and let them know that everybody should know that this is a difficult time and that nobody is going to be at the top of their game, uh, this early on. It's gonna take, uh, weeks and months in order to be totally comfortable, and hopefully we can stay in the hybrid situation or get back to in-person. But hopefully we don't have to go back to switch around. So I, you know, we thought the hybrid was the big way to open, and it's been working well. People have been pleased with it. And, uh, so this, this column, this article is acknowledging that, that, uh, these people have put in a lot of work, and we've asked them to do a lot, and they're, they're going through with it. So that's our thanks. That's, uh, that's, that's enough from me.
Thank you, Heidi and Mike, for explaining kinda how that came up, and, uh, Carson, you're in the queue, and then Mr. Bryant.
Yeah, I just, uh, wanna clarify, uh, one thing. Um, I, I posted, uh, the letter that I received, I think on Sunday or Monday, and I know there were some edits after that time, uh, but I received it from two different sources, and so I just left up the initial posting. And I just, Mike and Heidi, I just wanted you to know that that's the, the version that the Board Members have seen, so that, you know, if, if the Board approves it and people wanna sign their names, that, um, that that, the one that's posted now is the one that's sent. So I'm sorry that I wasn't able to figure that out this afternoon.
Nah, I'm sorry I couldn't figure it out. It, uh, I, I know there's some typos in there yet, at least one. I, I must have been doing electrical work when I was thinking about buses, but, uh, uh, and, any changes will be, will be typographical, and I don't think I'm gonna add anything to it. There's just, there's, there's no, there's no room, so, thanks.
Go ahead, Jim.
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, yeah, this is a very nice gesture, very nicely done. I, I like it very much. I'll be happy to put my name on it. Question, one question I have is, uh, do the people whose names are named in here, are they comfortable having their name put in the newspaper? Um, some people are. I would think they all would be, but that's just a question that'd have to be asked.
They are, Jim. I, I asked everybody, and I, Heidi did too, that we, we agreed that we should have their approval before we, uh, quoted them or, or, uh, mentioned them.
I think, I think a column would probably be best than a, than a letter to the editor, because you're right, there's some
Yeah, it's too big for a letter.
That they have, because you don't wanna argue with people that buy ink and fifty-five gallon drums. I learned that a long time ago. Um, but no, it's very good, and, uh, um, put my name down.
Thanks.
Holly, you are next.
Uh, thank you. So what was the ask that you want us to, you wanted us to read it, and then agree or disagree on whether or not we would support the letter coming from the whole Board?
Do you want your name on the letter? On, on the column?
No, I don't.
Board.
No, I think it's very well-written. I give you guys a lot of kudos, but I'm gonna pass. Thank you.
What's your holdout?
My answer's no.
So, all right, I won't go there. You did. Bye.
Anybody else have any input? Mr. Derrick's, do you wanna?
Yeah, I was just trying to find my microphone. Uh, so this is here, a, and it's an individual selection, whether you wanna be on the letter. It's not a letter from the School Board, per se, from what I gather. So I would be very proud to join you with my signature on it.
We were, we were hoping it would be a letter from the School Board, because all it's doing is giving kudos to our staff.
Janie, you're in the queue?
Yep, I'm supportive of my name being on it too. I guess I'm just, are we gonna make a motion to approve, or are you just asking for verbal consent here?
No, it's a vote. I think that's the way we have to do it.
Yeah, okay.
Just to recognize everybody's, you know, formal approval.
Yep. Well, I appreciate your work into it, and I don't mean to cut the, but I will, I will make a motion to approve the letter, if that, I suppose we need to do that to make it formal, so, is that okay? I'm understanding that correctly. I don't mean to end the discussion, but I guess we can continue too. But I'll make a motion to approve the quest.
I will second with a comment.
Go ahead, Jim.
The only thing I'll just add is people have asked, how's it going? What, you know, they're hearing the COVID numbers, they're hearing other states, they talk to people in other communities from anywhere from K through four, K through six, to in, distant learning, to hybrid, to in-school. So I just think this will go, uh, a ways in letting people in the community know what we're doing here in our district, six weeks into the school year, six, seven weeks into the school year. I, I think it's a, a good gesture. Like Mike had said earlier, this could all change by the numbers or by the action of some. Uh, but where we are right now, I think it's a, it's a good piece to let the people know and let them, it, um, read it, digest it, and ask any further questions or get involved if they want to.
Yeah.
Exactly, Jim. I, I just, that was part of why we did it, was just kind of a morale booster too. Um, I was, did the, uh, Southern Minnesota Coffee and Conversation on Friday morning, and that was one of our biggest discussion topics, was mental health of staff and, and everybody, and, um, just trying to look for some, you know, a boost, basically. And I, and that's what we wanted, was to kinda recognize, we've traveled a long, hard road, and we're not off it yet. And you're right, things may change. Um.
And I think, you know, I think the community is also having some hardship, you know, adapting and all this. So we understand that their, their struggles are, are not, we're not just trying to say we're the only ones having struggles out there, because we're not, because the community members with their parents and their children, the grandparents, the neighbors, the parents, uh, all that are juggling things around to make, make things work the best they can, and, and, you know, it, it goes a long way to say that, you know, it, it's not our staff who are doing a nice, very nice job, but it's also the community also playing a part in, in securing and making sure that this, we do the best we can for the kids.
Right, absolutely.
End of the year.
Yeah, it's the, it, you know, I, I, I had something in there, trying to get even more in the, the community involved, and, and really giving credit to the students who are just doing a fabulous job. Everybody's really impressed at how they're working around. And it's, it's just possible. It, it's to show that it's possible to do this. It's not, it's not impossible to get through this, and while everybody's gonna have difficulties, it's, uh, it's, it's possible, and we need to acknowledge those difficulties, accept them, and move through them. And, uh, our staff works, has, has never worked harder, I, I'm pretty sure. Because, you know, they were working every day from, since March, uh, getting this stuff organized, and throughout the summer. You know, we heard all kinds of stories.
Yep.
But it was, uh, yeah, thanks a lot. I appreciate you guys, uh, uh, liking this letter and approving it.
And Mike and Heidi, my sincere thanks for the effort in the, in spearheading this. You, it was your idea from the get-go on wanting to get this letter written, and I think really, you know, it's, it's, it's not that we're perfect. It's not that we don't have room to grow in our district, but I think it's, it's always good to celebrate the great things that are happening and to highlight those. Um, because if, if anybody knows that we need a little bit of good cheer in the world, it's, it's, uh, kids and teachers and parents. We need a little bit of a break, and it's always good to celebrate those good things going on, so I'm happy to also put my name on this letter. So the motion on the table is to approve the letter, and, uh, we'll start with, um, let's see, who made that motion? I'm sorry, it was Janie.
Janie, here, seconded by Jim.
Okay, thank you. And we'll start, Janie, with you for a roll call vote.
Aye.
Ms. Jones?
Aye.
Ms. Tower?
Um, explain to me again if I approve it, what, what does that mean?
Means your name is on it.
No, I said I don't want my name on it.
Okay, then.
So that's a no?
I approve the letter then?
You don't, then you say nay.
Interesting. That's an odd name.
All right, Mr. Bryant?
Aye.
Mr. Christensen?
Aye.
Mr. Derrick's?
Aye.
And Chair votes aye, so six, one. Thank you, everyone. Request for Proposals for the Lease of Real Property. Superintendent Anderson, do you want to, uh, give us some background information on the next item on our agenda?
Sure. Uh, for some time now, the Operations Committee has wanted to explore the possibility of leasing about ten acres of land, uh, on the Red Wing High School site. The idea was started because an individual, uh, approached the School District about wanting to lease, uh, land for a solar garden. Um, after talking with the Operations Committee, uh, it, it was decided that, uh, instead of just selecting that person to do a solar garden, that we wanted to open it up to anyone, uh, to lease that ten acres, uh, for any purpose. Of course, you know, we'd have, uh, final decision-making authority, but we wanted to open it up so it wasn't just targeted at one particular person for one particular type of project. And so, um, last spring, I know we had started to bring it to the School Board again, uh, for review, but then COVID hit. And so thankfully, we, uh, delayed, uh, issuing the RFP. Uh, but now we feel like we have our feet on the ground after the school has started, and we're ready to, uh, pursue the RFP.
Does anybody from the Operations Committee want to be in on this?
I'll make a motion to approve, because, yeah, he's right, we were, we started, uh, some time ago, and the COVID kind of, uh, put a halt to things, and, uh, so I think we're, just to put it on the table, I'll, I'll make a motion to approve.
Um, Heidi, you are in there.
Well, let's get that second motion, second to the motion before we discuss anything.
Okay.
I'll second.
Okay, made by Jim, seconded by Holly. All right, now Heidi.
So I noted one of the specifics was this would be a twenty-five-year lease, and we're confident that we don't need that land over the next twenty-five years. I mean, I, I couldn't tell from the nature of the photography what kind of thing we'd be looking at. I know when we purchased the land years ago, it was, you know, there was some discussion about a more centralized site. I just, um, I just wanted to hear what the committee's, um, discussion was on the twenty-five-year term, lease term.
In our thinking, and, uh, uh, you know, anyone on the Operations Committee can certainly jump in, but our thinking is that it could be up to twenty-five years. Uh, the ten acres is right by the Communications Tower that we have with HBC, and so I don't think it would be, uh, usable land for a field or for a school building.
Okay.
You know, and over the next twenty-five years, I, I think we're, we're perfectly fine with making a commitment to, uh, an entity that could generate revenue for the School District. But, you know, somebody else on the Operations Committee might wanna add to that thinking.
I think you hit the nail on the head.
Okay, thank you.
So the motion is to authorize this.
I'm in the queue.
Oh, sorry, Alan.
Um, if I could elaborate on here a little bit more, um, um, with the Communication Tower, usually there are restrictions on a lot of things that could be in that tower should it ever collapse. You wouldn't normally want to build a house or something with, within there, so. A lot of that information is kinda in that RFP. I'd just like to clarify one thing. It wasn't worded exactly, but I would assume that whoever submits an RFP would have the right to back out if they are unable to get approval from the Board of Education and the city and whatever unzoning on this, because all this has Because all this has to fit together, but it's a way to make another use of another 10 acres of ground up there. And I'm fully behind it. I just want to make sure that, in my opinion, whoever's doing this has to follow the process. And if they aren't, they shouldn't be locked into it.
Yeah, there would definitely be a due diligence period, uh, so that they can finalize arrangements with us, HBC if necessary, the city, and even the state. So even after the RFP is issued and we accept a proposal, I know we'll, we'll have to set that up in the actual agreement with the entity. But you're right, Arlen.
I didn't see that in the RFP specifically, that it should be there. I don't know if it needs to be added there, but I don't think it is as long as everybody understands, including whoever's putting out the proposals. But somehow it should be clarified that we've acknowledged that it's gonna take these processes to get approved. But nowhere does it say that they're obligated if they can't accomplish that, those other things because those entities don't want to go along with it. And I didn't see any provision in there for them putting down any earnest money. And I don't know if they're really... Generally, because of what happened at Jefferson, I would say we should have some earnest money on any agreement. But because of the complexity of this and realizing the hurdles I gotta go through, I don't know if it's necessary. Because you'd want to have to have it refundable anyway.
Yeah, I think, uh, both of those issues should be addressed in, in any agreement that we come up with, with the entity, uh, instead of the RFP. But I completely agree with you, this is a complicated process. And, uh, you know, will take some time to finalize, even after we select, uh, one of the proposals.
Yeah, just to point out to anybody, if it doesn't go through, it didn't cost us anything other than the start of the RFP's process. So it's just sitting there and, and it's not like having a building that costs you maintenance while you're waiting and everything.
Yeah, that's a good point.
Janie, you're in the queue.
Yep, I appreciate the committee, you know, opening it up to all options. I think that's great. But I was wondering for you committee members and Carsten, um, for anybody that has soccer players, you know, there's still a lot of room for improvement on the parking on that, on that, um, kind of bottom end of that 4.8 acres when you're looking at the picture. I just was wondering if you guys discussed at all of the district, making that area a little bit more usable for people parking for practices and games over there when we rent that field to, um, associations and such? Did you guys discuss that at all, or?
Uh, we've talked about soccer issues in the past in terms of the number of fields, the quality of the fields, especially with drainage, parking issues. Uh, but the committee and administrative team have not specifically talked about parking, uh, in that area.
With the exception of getting handicap parking there a couple of years ago.
Yep, and that's, I guess I just, I don't know how that, you know, with the RFP and whoever ends up leasing that, I guess I just bring that up because it is, when high school soccer is going on and when association and JV games are there, there is, um, cars on both sides of that road, um, all the way up almost. And so I, I don't know, I guess that's just a concern to me that I don't want, that can't, that's not very workable as it is. And so I'm a little bit concerned that we're not making any improvements on the land that we currently own. And then that's gonna be wrapped up for 25 to 30 years. So I just would ask that we somehow address that. And I know that we had, you know, going back to our facility and, and sports area, you know, plans, I guess. I don't mean to call on Kevin or maybe it's something we can ask him when he's in certain days. But, um, that's still not extremely workable and I would hate to not be able to make it better for many, many years in the future.
I think we can probably put that on a future agenda item, the, the future of the hockey, or hockey soccer fields, the locations, and what needs can and cannot work there. So I don't think for us to fairly say we understand what's going on there without really having time to, to take a peek at it, so.
Yep, no, that's fine, as long as you guys can kind of take it into consideration as we work with them, work with whoever wins a bid and that process. So, thank you.
Good.
Yeah, and I'll talk to Paul Hartman and Alan Gaylor about that particular issue so that before we sign any agreements, we, you know, can thoroughly review that.
Good idea.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? All right, so the motion made by Jim, seconded by Holly, is to move the, to authorize the superintendent to issue the request for proposals for the lease of real property as presented. Any other discussion? All right, then we'll start the roll call vote with Heidi Jones.
Aye.
Ms. Tower?
Aye.
Mr. Bryant?
Aye.
Mr. Christensen?
Aye.
Mr. Derrickx?
Aye.
Uh, Ms. Fair?
Aye.
And chair votes aye, so seven, zero, that passes. Thank you. Next on our agenda is the Rental Guidelines for Outside Organizations During COVID by Dawn Wenner.
Oh, thank you for having me. We did bring this up, um, at the Operations Committee and the Operations Committee decided to bring it here. Uh, since then, we have had the Minnesota State High School League, the Department of Education that has authorized two spectators to come for a athlete or participant. So what I would like to have this group decide tonight is tournaments and spectators at rental with our renters that use our facilities. Majority of the renters that are currently using our facilities are youth organizations. So we have developed two scenarios, one that would not include any spectators or any, um, tournaments at all. And then scenario two, that would have spectators allowed and also, um, to allow tournaments with very specific guidelines that also the Minnesota State High School League and the Department of Education have outlined. In addition to that, uh, just so you know, we also do following of the Department of Health. So that would be a consideration. So we would have renters that would need to take very thorough attendance. We would have to have individuals just like the Minnesota State High School League. You wouldn't just have drop-ins or substitutes for people that come as spectators. We would need to get those lists ahead, both visitors and home individuals. So, um, again, I don't know if you've had an opportunity to look at the scenarios, but what I would like to have this group do is decide as a school district what we would want to do with our outside renters. Knowing that, I think it was Holly who earlier said our numbers are going up. And, um, I would also like to consider that our renters would be, um, you know, put on hold if we would go to complete distance learning. There wouldn't make a lot of sense, it wouldn't make a lot of sense for us to have youth activities if kids can't be in school because our numbers are high. So, open for discussion?
Uh, do you think there will be, sorry, Arlen, your name jumped me.
Go ahead, Arlen.
Away from you, Mike, I'm sorry. Um, I am going to oppose either of these scenarios. It is my belief with COVID the way it is, I do not want to introduce any more people to our educational buildings to run the risk of spreading this anymore. My primary focus in everything I do is education of our kids and keeping them in the classroom as much as possible in a safe manner. And I'm sure I'll probably be on my own with this, but hopefully somebody else follow along. But I, I mentioned at operations, I, I look at the ice arena a little bit differently because it was built by the community. Yes, we run it. And when I thought through it, what is a criteria? To me, the criteria is that's, uh, more of an athletic facility for our sports. Yes, we have our students in hockey in that building, but it's not a classroom building. So I, because of classroom building, I'm not in favor of any of our regular educational schools being open to the public at this time. And I will stand by it.
Clarify, um, Arlen, we do have renters in the building now. This would specifically be to look at spectators. Spectators being involved, both to come.
I'll stay opposed to it because I don't think we should have renters in the building.
Okay, thank you for clarifying that.
Janie?
You know, I did have a community member ask for some clarification about, um, you know, about if, if we are in distance learning, you know, why we would not rent them. So, you know, and, and so I just asked, like, in the aspect of, you know, when we're looking at numbers, our county numbers may be very high due to, you know, older adults, you know, or, you know, 30 and 40-year-olds being positive. But if students are necessarily positive, is, should we be taking that into consideration and having a different decision on keeping our gyms open? Um, but Dawn, is that, it sounds like you guys aren't, like, the State High School League isn't even allowing that currently? Or can you tell me the status of that?
You know, I, I think Paul isn't on here any longer, but I think if the, um, school would be go to distance learning, that they would not have high school sports either. That, you know, like Wabashaw has just gone on a two-week distance learning, uh, model. And they are not allowing any activities in their building. And just to clarify, um, there's communities like Rochester that are not renting any of their facilities to anybody right now. They are focusing just on keeping kids safe during the day to make sure that they continue their educational model and that is their focus. Um, but they're like, again, like Paul said, they're all across the board. So what I would like just to have is some idea of what direction you would want to go. But I wouldn't suggest at all that we would open our, our buildings if we would go to distance learning. You would have the same children in the buildings. Um, and then how are we gonna get that reduction in numbers? You're gonna have continual exposure every single day. And just so you know, we watch our kids from the minute they get here to the minute they go away. And like Holly said, um, we are limiting their exposure. They're wearing masks the whole time, they're distance learning, I mean, they're, they're social distancing. They, uh, wash their hands frequently and they're monitored the whole time they're here. Once they come to school and they leave school, we, we don't have any, um, way to monitor that. So that exposure, like Carsten said, is happening, uh, more on that social end. Um, I, I can't tell you the number of times we've social-distanced kids all day long and then they get in the car with four or five friends and they take the masks off and there they go on their way. We saw the same thing this summer. I mean, we had 900 kids, 1,000 kids in community ed activities. And we could only monitor the time they were in our buildings or on our fields. So I think we're just opening up more exposure. And then you bring, for tournaments, you're bringing kids in from other towns, sometimes six, seven, eight towns for some tournaments. So we're bringing other kids in that we don't have any way to monitor them also. But the guidelines are very clear as far as, um, keeping the date on who is in our building when they're here for tournaments. Um, also practices, we're gonna ask renters to keep not only students that are participating, but also parents that would come in the building to help kids get on skates or help them with their, their equipment. Um, so the protocol would be very tightly adhered to and the association would have to agree to that. So I want to give the flip side, this is gonna put the responsibility on those renters.
Yep, and I guess if I can just add, sorry to interrupt you, Dawn, a little bit, like, I know I'm involved with multiple associations and they each have their own COVID, um, you know, preparedness plan. And so I fully support scenario two. I, you know, I just feel like we're within Minnesota State High School League parameters and Department of Education, sounds like the Department of Health. So, uh, we gotta make sure that everybody's mental health is well and good and people are moving and taking care of themselves. So I just want to state my support for that.
All right, thanks, Janie. Jim, you are in the queue?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I look at this, uh, it's gonna be very similar to our school board vote six, eight, or ten, eight, 10 weeks ago when we went from either distant learning, hybrid, or in-school. No matter what we decide, some people aren't gonna be, um, pleased with the decision. I think, uh, the fact that the high, I'm leaning towards, like Janie did, I'm leaning towards the fact that the High School League and Department of Health have set some rules up and some guidelines to allow something like this, uh, to take place. We're seven months into this unusual times. Uh, getting some normalcy back is something that I've been hearing loud and clear from a number of people. Uh, uh, the only thing I still, I see in difference in scenario, uh, one thing I'd like to see, maybe add it in scenario one and two, is probably in the agreement, Dawn, is you gotta have, somebody's gotta be the lead person from that group, no matter who it is, whether it's the, whatever association.
The president of the association is the one, or the person who turns in the preparedness plan is typically, yes, Jim, and you're correct. That would be identified by the renters. Who would be their lead person that takes responsibility?
Okay, as I was saying, yeah, it should be spelled out in the agreement here, the scenario one and two. Somewhere where that person or pe- persons, um, have this, um, are the ones, names are put on there to do it. I know we rent out here, where I work at, we rent out the building next door, the, the Kuyt Alliance Center. And, uh, the 4H group wants to use it. They have protocols and they've, they've even sent, sent us the protocols and how they get their kids in, who's gonna be there, social distancing, wiping things down afterwards. Um, so that's not unusual nowadays to ask for that. So with that, uh, we got, we gotta decide, we gotta get back to something, uh, at some point. And I, I wish, I don't have a crystal ball to tell you when that time is right, but to sit there and not continue to, uh, let this thing handle us, uh, you know, we gotta, we gotta be able to listen to the people, the High School League and the Department of Education. If they have the, uh, things of the rules and plans in place, we need to, uh, consider them. Thank you.
Heidi?
Um, I just, I, I, I'll probably vote yes. Um, I, I personally have my own reservations, but I, I know we're following guidance. Um, my main concern is if things are, are getting worse, I, I want to be assured that our entire district, including our community and department, is, has that flexibility and fluidity to say, you know what? You know, like Wabashaw found itself in a situation and we still retain the authority to say we're at an all stop right now because of the circumstances and public health is our number one concern. So I just, I just want that to be, that's priority number one for me.
And I agree. I think if we go to eat distant learning, boom. I, I totally agree, the building's shut down for everybody to use, even outside. It just, that's the way it is. That's the way I, I'd be with you. If you shut down, nobody going to school, there's no sense in renting your building out. But if you have a school open, let's look at it.
Holly?
Opening the school up the way it's being talked about tonight, I know as a parent, if my sixth grader was gonna go play basketball somewhere, I would not want to be there. That's saying I would actually let my sixth grader go. It would, it would really depend on, you know, the parents' preference. So I can't say keeping people away when they want to actually take care of their children while they're at the events is gonna be productive. Then it's up to the association whether or not they even want to attend the tournaments. But if we do allow spectators to come from all over in different communities, we will move into distance learning quicker. Because we will be exposing our kids and our building to more people outside of our control. So that's basically how I see this. The more people we allow in from places that we have no... That's kind of what the stats have said. So I don't, I don't necessarily know, but like I said, as a parent, I would want to go and watch my son and make sure there was a mask on, they were socially distanced and all of that stuff. It's very difficult.
Bracken?
Yeah, so, uh, obviously this is a very difficult choice to make and you guys have a hard decision ahead of you for sure. As a student, personally, I don't know if it's the right move to open up our schools. I agree with Holly in the sense of you are allowing more people, more exposure, more movement of the virus. The more people you bring in, the more chance you're bringing of COVID. Right now, from what it's sounding like, as of now, we believe that there's no COVID transmission within the schools and we want to keep it that way. I urge you not to take a reactive approach, but instead of a proactive approach. I urge you to err on the side of caution versus on the side of recovering from the damage caused. of recovering from the damage caused. This has been over half a year of being in this pandemic, and I understand people are tired of it. I'm tired of it. Students and teachers and parents, we're all tired of this. But us being tired of this pandemic doesn't mean it's going to go away. I urge all of you to think about what you're doing by allowing more students into, more parents and more people into our schools. You are allowing more transition to, you're, you're allowing more transition of the virus to occur. You're allowing higher risk. And yes, I know that's hard. I know with my parents, they want to attend my meets, they want to attend my events, and it's very difficult for that to be taken into consideration, because parents want to see their kids. And that, as a parent, I can only imagine how hard that is to see your kid in the school and want to support them, but being unable to. When it comes down to it, we have to keep student body safety in mind, and we have to have that be priority. I would urge you not to vote for this, and I would urge you to keep in mind that students, we want them in school, and that by allowing more parents into our schools and more outside community members into our school district, you're allowing schools to be shut down sooner and for longer. That's all I have to say on the matter.
Thank you, Brecken. I will add to this by saying that all throughout this whole summer, associations have been working and continuing with AAU basketball, and hockey arenas have been fully utilized throughout the whole state of Minnesota all summer long. I think that with appropriate and proper precautions in place, it's not any different than shopping at Walmart or driving a car. I'm not here to debate science. What I, what I'm trying to weigh is the mental health of our kids, the importance of movement, what kids learn as a part of a team. We have high school sports, and the kids are participating in those high school activities with parameters. And so why would we want to take that away from our younger athletes? So I am in full favor of, of opening our buildings. I think that, from what I have observed through the summer, there's still, there were still kids running cross country this summer. There was, three times a week, we had winger workouts in smaller pods. The football players were working out in smaller pods before football started. Baseball Association worked all summer long with parameters in place, and smart parameters. The kids all wore masks. My daughter's softball team, they wanted to all be in the dugout, but they were able to spread apart and be able to be very wise. I think the kids want to be in school, they want to be with their friends, and they do want to play their sports. And so I think a lot of kids and parents are willing to do whatever it takes to make sure that they can do these activities in a safe way. So I think there is a way to do, do this as safely as possible. That doesn't mean it's foolproof, but I, I think that the, the mental health and the piece about moving and being active is very important to keep your minds active as well. So that is my two cents. Any other comments before we have a motion to adopt the scenario two?
I have a question. How many, how many non-division events are taking place in our school? How many people are we renting out to who are not a part of the High School League with us, Dawn?
Well, we have, depending on, we have some people that are waiting. They haven't signed up for anything, because they're waiting for the outcome of this. It's typically about six different groups, but they have, some of them have backed out this year. So I think right now, we're looking at swim club, basketball, volleyball, hockey, association basketball. So those are the main groups. So your gymnasiums and our arena, basically trying to all share that space with high school sports that have been delayed and crunched into, you know, very shortened seasons. So this group knows, and the community knows, high school sports come first as far as being able to use the facilities. So we're very closely with Activities Department, and they have their stuff on, so we're able to, you know, give some time to our associations. Most of our other individuals at this point, Girl Scouts, Boy Scouts, they're not using our facilities right now. They're meeting in other locations.
Yeah. And what about things like Math Masters, or are those events going on?
Yeah, and most of those are online, Mike. A lot of what we've seen is online. They're not necessarily in person.
So most of this stuff is, well, all of it's athletic endeavors and competition?
Correct.
And is there any additional expense will be occurring with?
Yes. We have told all the associations with sanitation, the additional time for our custodians, that they will be paying more. They're, they're all aware of that. If they haven't signed up yet, they will be. We make sure they know that upfront. It is going to take extra time, and it's going to be extra work for our custodial staff, and I want to acknowledge that. And right now, we are not having any concessions this year, so that will eliminate that, that piece, that food service was providing support for the concession stands. So that's not in the discussion. That had already been decided by this group earlier. So right now, it is just our custodial staff that will be working very hard to get our buildings clean and sanitized before our kids come the next day.
And the individual groups are going to be responsible for taking everybody's name so that they have contact tracing capabilities? And what if, what if they don't do that?
Excuse me, Mike? What?
What if, what if one of the groups or some of the groups don't, don't fulfill their obligation to get everybody's name for contact tracing? Because that's a large part of this.
At this point, we don't have any agreement that we will monitor that. It is their responsibility. It's part of this contract that they will be signing, part of their preparedness plan. They need to take, our association would be responsible for not only when they use their building and bringing our local athletes in and spectators, but they would also be responsible for getting any visitors, you know, list and attendance and making sure that we have that attendance down. It's the only way we can really do contract tracing.
Right. But they, they will be giving us those lists?
You know, they need to have them ready. I don't know if we would need to take everybody's list, but if the Department of Health would need those too, because there's been a positive, they would have to, you know, contact them and get those lists, or our association would have the information available.
Yeah, I would, if this goes through, I would really recommend that we at least check in on them and make sure that, in the beginning at least, that they develop the habit of doing that. Some places do and some don't, and it's really a major part of making sure that we can contain this virus.
Clear in scenario two, that that would be number one. It's the way that we have to identify. And if we are really adhering to mask-wearing and social distancing and hand washing, we shouldn't have any close contacts. You know, so again, I just want, because I'm on the COVID team, that social distancing and mask-wearing, it's what we have. It's the only tools we have right now. So if we don't adhere to those, we're, you know, we'll have consequences.
Right. All right. Thanks, Dawn.
Janie?
Yep. I'm going to make the motion to approve scenario two for these protocols for community ed. But just with a quick comment too, is that I almost wish we could have incorporated one of the associations' COVID preparedness plans in here, because I, if any of you want to see it, I'd be happy to direct you to people, because they are really elaborate. I mean, all these organizations, whether it be the Y, or the associations, or schools, and whatever group have been working on this for many, many months now. And they're pretty elaborate about, you know, being very specific about if your child had, what to do if your child has been exposed, what to do if your child is sick, what to do if your child has tested positive. And if I understand, when I read, I believe, the basketball one, they even have the point person, who is the person who will be contacting, you know, the Department of Health and such. And of course, that, that comes with human responsibility, and we have to know that we're not completely in control. But I just see no other way but to keep on working in the system of safety and guidelines, and I feel like we're doing that. So I'm going to make that motion to.
Janie, those are public. So if anybody wants to see those, those are in our office on our counter that anybody can see at any time. So those are available. If anybody has questions.
Holly?
I, I agree with you, Janie, that the plans are probably perfectly laid out. I do also know that there are some staff in our buildings.
What is the order? There's a motion on the floor?
She was about to make it, but I.
She did make it.
Did anybody second it?
No.
Well, that's what we're waiting for.
Is there a second?
Not me.
I'll second for discussion.
Thank you, Arlen. So motion by Janie, seconded by Jim. Okay, go ahead, Holly.
Um, I was just going to say that I do know that there are staff right now in our buildings who won't wear their masks. It's very difficult to tell an adult to get their mask on, very difficult. So when we open the doors to people we don't know, maybe it'll be easier. Say, hey, get your mask on or get out. I don't know. But again, we open up to a lot of different entities.
All right. Any other discussion? All right. So the motion on the table is to adopt scenario two in the rental guidelines for outside organizations. And we'll start the roll call vote with Holly Tower.
Um, no.
Jim Bryant?
Hi.
Mike Christensen?
If you have to trust people, I don't know. I'll say aye. I mean, we need to, yeah, anyway, see how protocols work.
Mr. Derrick's?
No.
Janie Fair?
Aye.
Heidi Jones?
Aye.
And chair votes aye. So that passes five, two? Okay. Next on the agenda is health insurance plans for 2021, presented by Jackie.
All right. Good evening, board members. We have been working on our health insurance bids with the LMC for the past, oh, probably about four months. Our bids went out in July. They were returned in August. As you can see from our recommendation, they were not very pretty. The LMC is recommending that we switch carriers to Blue Cross Blue Shield at an average of about 11 and a half percent increase. Are there questions, Janie, or I think I saw Kirby was on the call too, if any of you want to add anything?
Could you give us some context about, you know, what were the other bids that you saw that 11 and a half percent is, is the, you know, the recommendation? What was the nature of, of the other bids and proposals that you entertained?
So we entertained Health Partners, came in with a 16% increase. All the other bidders came back with over 20% to 30 or plus percent increases. We have had a couple of really bad claims years. That is really contributing to the increase. Add to that the COVID pandemic and the uncertainty, and 11 and a half percent is where we landed. The other piece that the LMC liked about Blue Cross Blue Shield is that Blue Cross would give us a second year rate guarantee. Again, it's 15%, but Health Partners wouldn't even entertain a second year rate guarantee.
All right. That makes a lot of sense. Yeah, those numbers were hard to look at when it's hitting household budgets, but I guess I'm not surprised that this is where we're at. So, and I know this is hard work, so I give kudos to everybody who sits on that committee, because sometimes this is pretty painful to wade through and acknowledge, you know, that you've got to make some tough decisions. I really, I served on the LMC for a long time. Really appreciate that group that gathers around the table. So I know it's not easy. I will make a motion to accept the Blue Cross Blue Shield as the district's health insurance provider for calendar year 2021.
This is Janie. I'll second that. And then I just want to add, I want to thank, you know, we have a superstar group of people on that LMC that, that know insurance and know their rates and know finances. So great job to Kirby and his team, and then Jackie and Amy are complete superstars. So this was a really hard process, knowing that, you know, health insurance across the board for many people is probably going to be increases for everybody, not businesses, public entities. And, you know, it was a thorough process working with our consultants, who do a great job of helping us understand every little tidbit. And we did a great job of going back and forth with Blue Cross as far as kind of our needs and questions, and ended up getting some incentives in the end by even some of our questions and concerns. And I just wanted to acknowledge that obviously this will be a really big, you know, change whenever you change carriers. I'm sure many of us have done that before. And I know Kirby and I and the rest of our district staff are working on ways to really have a thorough communication with our staff to just make that as soft and understanding as we can. I mean, there will be, I'm sure, some, you know, hiccups, whether it be just getting insurance cards late or whatever, but this is a pretty thorough change. You know, we have to change our HRAs and some different things too. So again, I just really want to thank Jackie and Amy, because they did a great job through this process, but then they're going to have a lot, you know, a lot of work going forward too. But this is, you know, a savings, if I can put that in quotations, of, you know, over $150,000. And so we, you know, in a way, it made the decision easy, but it is what it is. And, and I just want to, again, thank everybody. Kirby, I don't know if you want to add anything while you're on the call, but... Or if there's any other questions.
Yep. This is Kirby. Thank you for the invite. My understanding is I will speak if spoken to, so I can answer direct questions if there are any. Thank you.
Mr. Bryant, you're in the queue, and then Arlen.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Looking at this, and I'm going to have to abstain, because I pay monthly for my full family insurance out of my own pocket, so I'm going to have to, out of this plan right here. So I will be abstaining. But I do have a couple of questions. Health Partners, they must, did they have a different deductible last year? Because I recall paying less than that, 157218. It was 13 or 14 something. So I'm just, I'm not so sure the Health Partners, I thought there was a $6,500 deductible, if I recall, or something like that. And then my other question is, what, what is this Family 350 and Single 350? What are those? I'm not quite sure what those are.
All right. So we have had the same deductibles for a number of years. There is a single plan with a $3,000 deductible, and the family plan that goes with that has a $6,000 deductible.
Okay.
And then there's a single plan with a $5,000 deductible, and a family plan that goes with that, that has a $10,000 deductible. So we've had those for, at least as long as I've been business manager, so about five years now, probably more. We do have some grandfather provisions because of some retirement agreements, where we have to still offer that 350 plan to those that were enrolled in it when they retired. There's only two people left in that group.
For somebody that pays every penny of it for a family health insurance, this is, that's, this is a huge increase, which, well, it'll be what it is. My other question is, you know, we have to get our hands as a district around this. We can't keep paying and paying and paying more. And so maybe we are, maybe we're not. You talked about $150,000 savings. I'm curious, Janie, what that is, because you piqued my interest when you said we have $150,000 savings. And I'm not sure, explain that further, please.
Well, that would be the difference between if we would have stayed with Health Partners
Well, that would be the difference between if we would have stayed with health partners or not, so we're going to see an increase either way.
Okay, so it's not a, so savings if you stay with the original, the current plan, but it's not a savings at all for anybody because everybody's, everybody's paying more. And, uh, it's just, yeah, it's just, we just, this is just going to drive. I mean, I I quoted a, I'm going to get off my, I'm going to get on my soapbox. I got the, I got the floor, so I'm going to keep it. And so I did a quote for our business out here, for our employees. We have a very small group. There was one family that would have to pay thirty thousand dollars a year for a family coverage. Outrageous, un- unbelievable, unacceptable. I mean, it's just going, everybody's going to have to pay more and more, contribute more for this because it can't be sustaining the way it is. And we have to look at that as a group, as a, as a district, as a state, as a federal government, and I'm not going to go into that. But I will be abstaining the fact that I do benefit from this, and I don't want to have any type of, um, uh, feeling that I biased, so I'm voting, I'll be abstaining, Madam Chair, when you call the question.
Thank you. Thank you for letting me know that.
If I can add too, I mean, we, I don't have the numbers in front of me right now, Jackie, maybe you can, but I know, um, our excellent teacher, Tammy Mickelson, had brought up that, you know, one of the reasons they they did see a quite a substantial increase this year is that our rates have been fairly, um, I don't want to say reasonable, but not as high as a maybe other entities have been um, for the last ten to fifteen years, and they almost called this like a catch-up period. Um, and I'm not, you know, at all justifying that, of course, but we have, you know, realized that the clinic has in general, you know, been a cost savings mechanism, so I don't know if there's any questions on that, but we have seen, you know, pretty flat increases compared to other entities in health insurance when other places are seeing hu- bigger increases over the last ten, fifteen years, so.
All right, Mr. Derrick's?
Thank you. Um, thank goodness for Medicare. I finally hit the milestone. But, uh, I I just wanted to say I will abstain from this vote because my wife is employed by the district and it has a bearing on her income or benefits, so thank you.
Good comment on the Medicare. I, you got me good on that one.
Your day is covered.
I got eleven months away, but I'm going to tell you how old I am.
All right, so I do have a motion on the table from, uh, Heidi and seconded by Janie to approve the Blue Cross Blue Shield as the district's health insurance provider for calendar year 2021. Any other discussion? All right, then we'll take a roll call vote, and the roll call vote at this one time starts with Mr. Bryant, who is abstaining. Uh, Mr. Christiansen?
I'm abstaining, so, okay, thank you.
I'm not. Aye.
Okay. Mr. Derrick's?
Abstained.
Yep. Uh, Ms. Fair?
Aye.
Ms. Jones?
Aye.
Ms. Tower?
Aye.
And chair votes aye. Five, four, and two abstain. Educational data sharing agreement is the next item on our agenda.
Yep, and I'll, uh, address that. Um, we've been updating several educational data privacy agreements uh, as a result of feedback and, uh, good questions, uh, received over the last few months. You can see that, um, well, I'll just briefly, uh, explain, uh, each entity that we're signing the agreements with. First of all, I three works. Um, we began working with them a few years ago, uh, when they helped us with a routine audit from the Minnesota Department of Education, uh, which was conducting the routine audit at the, um, behalf of the Office of Civil Rights. Had to do a student enrollment and vocational courses, making sure that, um, you know, that, uh, enrollments were not disproportionate. So they did, uh, some very good work, uh, with us in that regard. Uh, since then, I three works has completed a variety of projects for the school district. I've listed, um, many of those projects, uh, in the information packet as an FYI. Um, I believe all of you are aware of our work with Everyhand Joined, uh, that, uh, the movement, uh, the genesis of the movement was about ten years ago, and I think the formal arrangements were uh, maybe six or seven years ago, uh, give or take, and, um, they've worked with us, uh, in a number of ways and, uh, partnered with a lot of different community organizations to do great work for our kids. And, uh, one of the services that they've been providing for us is some data work uh, related to student achievement and, um, uh, other data. We also have working relationships with, um, other community organizations, including Hispanic Outreach, Youth Outreach, uh, and more recently, Hope Coalition. So the, uh, the request tonight is to approve uh, agreements with I three works, a master services agreement, as well as educational data privacy agreements with Everyhand Joined, Hispanic Outreach, Youth Outreach, and Hope Coalition. Uh, those particular educational data privacy agreements are not required, uh, but I definitely think they are good practice, and, uh, I think we ought to have them in place, otherwise, you know, I don't think we should be sharing, uh, uh, data, you know, with those organizations. So, again, the recommendation is to approve those, uh, particular agreements. Um, just to give a little backstory, there have been a lot of concerns expressed, uh, over the past few months. Um, I've learned a lot in the process. Um, I think that we're making some good, uh, changes in some of our practices, uh, that will, um, uh, enable us to serve our students even better. Uh, and, uh, so I'm proud of the the changes that we're making. Uh, but again, uh, one step in that process is to approve these, uh, educational data privacy agreements, and I'm available for questions.
Holly?
Thank you. Um, Carson, could you tell the board or the community how a family can opt out of having their data shared?
Yeah, that's a, um, that's a good question, uh, Holly. Uh, there are, uh, different, for example, uh, we have directory information that's essentially public information, and so parents can notify us if they do not want us to share that information uh, outside, um, well, with anyone. Um, it's sort of an all or none, uh, kind of deal. Uh, right now, our, our, you know, when we're sharing, uh, educational data, for example, with Youth Outreach, um, if we're sharing that student level data, then parents need, uh, to sign a release form to share particular kinds of data uh, with Everyhand Joined and Youth Outreach. And so with the student level data, it's an opt-in. Uh, in terms of opting out, um, I don't, um, you know, what, uh, what individuals could do, I believe, uh, would be to notify us, uh, that they would like that to happen. Um, and then, you know, we would process it accordingly. I I haven't had anyone do that, and so I don't think there's, you know, we'd have to navigate those waters as they come up.
Thank you.
Janie?
Yep, I just want to comment in complete, um, support of this. You know, I just feel like if we're going to start making student outcome decisions and changes and improvements, we have to have these data sharing agreements and data available to us. Um, you know, we always talk about making data-driven decisions, and that's what, you know, is good practice and best practice, and I've just in full support of this. I mean, I've worked with Everyhand Joined a little bit, and I don't know what we would have done if we wouldn't have had the data that we were able to have and make improvements, um. You know, and specifically, I know many of you have heard of the Summer Blast program, and it was essential that we were able to see in a, um, you know, I believe the term is a desegregated way to see, you know, where our greatest needs are for improvement and where our, you know, where our data just is, you know, as a reality in this district. So whether it be equity or, um, you know, just communication or activities of trying to get our kids involved in different, you know, mentoring or different programs outside of school, we need to be able to see real fact numbers. So whether it's Hispanic Outreach or or the Y or anything, I just am very supportive of being able to look at data so we can make data-driven decisions when we're trying to change outcomes and and make improvements in our district. And with the Summer Blast program, we were able to, um, look at data and see that kids were making, you know, improvements in their reading just by some of the programs that our community is working toward. And how great was that for people to be able to see that, um, and and know that they're putting a commitment into something that was showing positive outcomes? So, again, we have to have data and ways to gather that data to make those positive changes happening. So I know I'm going to support this, and I'm going to make a motion to approve this.
I'll second that.
Motion approved by Janie and seconded by Heidi. Other discussion? I see your name in the queue, Holly.
Thank you. Um, so it's my understanding that the contracts are already signed, so then it's assumed that people are in agreement? Is that correct, Carson?
Yeah, in the past, uh, these agreements have not gone, uh, through the school board for approval. And so, you know, I signed on behalf of the school district, uh, these educational data privacy agreements, you know, and those kinds of things. Uh, in the future, though, and this is kind of part of the, um, continuous improvement process, uh, first I want, you know, these agreements to just be one year at a time, you know, because then we can actually, uh, make decisions, uh, like in August of each year, if we want to continue in the in the following year. Uh, and also I want the, uh, policy committee as well as the school board to review, and then the the school board to actually, you know, approve or deny, uh, each one. So that's one of the changes that, um, you know, I've already, uh, instituted, and so these agreements would end in a year, and then I would take them to the policy committee and then the school board.
Okay, so to me, like I had mentioned in the policy committee, it's still quite muddy for me, how all of this is organized, what the goals are, how we get rid of data, you know, if we share it, do they destroy it? Who else do they share it with? It's really not clear, and so I'm not going to be supporting it until I have a very clear plan of how I can communicate that to families, what is shared, what isn't shared, and what are your options for opting out? Or how are you notified that these organizations have access to your data? We don't have that anywhere for families to access except for one statement in our policy. So I think it's really important that the district, in fairness of transparency and respect to families, that we don't assume that they want help without asking them if that is indeed what they want, because that's extremely equitable in that sense for for every family. So I won't be supporting it right now, not to say that it doesn't improve tremendously, and then looking at it in the future.
And, uh, if I could respond, uh, first, I respect, uh, your, you know, your vote. Um, and, uh, and second, I I think you bring up some fair issues, uh, and some fair comments uh, that I think we can, uh, work on over the next few months to make, uh, a process even better. Um, I know in the policy committee, uh, meeting earlier this afternoon, Arlen brought up the possibility of, well, I think he called it a citizens group to kind of review this. Um, and, you know, uh, perhaps it could go through the district advisory council or another entity, um, as we work with the policy committee to really refine everything we're doing, um, and then take it to the board for approval. So, um, I think you're on the policy committee, Holly, and I'm glad for that, and I think if we can outline, uh, further outline some of those questions or some of those concerns that you and and other people have about a lot of different issues, uh, what data we share, whether or not we conduct surveys, you know, what what information do we share from those surveys, both students and parents? I think those are legitimate concerns that we need to work on together, uh, no doubt about it. So, um, I think we should just add it to, um, our policy committee agenda, you know, for indefinitely, and then figure out how to get input from, uh, people in the district advisory council and and other places so we can move forward. So I I agree with you, uh, addressing those concerns.
Arlen's in the queue, and then Heidi.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have a lot of reservations about sharing this data, and, um, I asked a bunch of questions also here at the policy committee meeting. Um, one I didn't ask is how long has this practice been going on? I know it's been a while. Um, what is the purpose of it, and what is our purpose as a district? Is it our district purpose to supply that data to everybody? Um, I have major concerns about outside groups having access to our data. I'm wondering if we should have our own employee do that or just one consultant to us that does that. I just have major, major concerns about this information being put out. I also realize the value that this can do to people that get this information, which is important, but I also have concerns about the detriments if for some reason there is a breach in this data. And so what is the best procedure going forward here? As Carson said, I I don't know what kind of group it is, but we need, I think, to have parents and I don't know how much community members, but stakeholders in our district that their information is going to be put out there, what their feeling is, what, how do we do it? How do we safeguard it? Because the best way to put this program together is if that group that's data is going to be going out there has a say on how it can be used. And so that's where my suggestion is. I don't know if it comes out of district advisory committee, uh, se- separate ad hoc committee, whatever it is, I don't care, but let's get this out to people. Hey, this stuff is here, it's being put out. I believe we're doing it within the confines of the law, so for that reason, I don't, I'm not going to oppose it here tonight. So I will support approving this tonight, but it better be figured out before next August, because next time my vote's going to be no if we don't have answers. That's my statement. Thank you.
Heidi?
So I I'm hoping, and I think we're in that space where we're solution-oriented, um, and I I agree with bits and pieces of what everyone else has said up to now, um. You know, I think it's healthy, the public sharing of these contracts. I think it's healthy for to limit them to an annual term. Um, I think it's a healthy process that the policy committee will be involved. Um, I do think it's a very appropriate suggestion to, um, put this in front of the, um, district advisory council or committee. I think that's a good group. It's fairly large, it's diverse. That's what it's meant to be, is representative of the community, so I think that's a good idea. Um, and I really, you know, looking at all of the work, it has been an effective partnership with these organizations to improve student outcomes. Um, and I realize there's some difficulty here, and I'm hoping, um, I'm hoping we're going to address that so that the parents are clear on what, where where they're at with their their student. Um, so I'll be voting yes, I, but I really do appreciate that we've examined this. Um, I don't know if we have it perfect yet, but I think we've made great strides. Thanks.
Uh, Janie, and then Mike.
Yep, I just, I would agree with a lot of the comments about making sure parents agree to this and know what's happening. I mean, I do feel like, um, you know, we got to make sure if people don't want their data collected and dispersed other organizations, that they have the right to to opt out of that, but I feel like as a district, whether, I might be mistaken, but I feel like I sign a box or something every, you know, beginning of the school year for for each four kids. So I don't know if that's true or not, but, um, maybe it is something like that, that, um, you know, at the beginning of the school year, at a certain time, that we all know that this is the time that you're going to get a list of what your child is going to be taking surveys or such, and I, and I just think, you know, we have to be very transparent about that, so I appreciate many of you bringing that up, so.
Um, you know, I I know I'm out a, out of turn here, uh, but if I could just, uh, uh, respond to Janie's comments, uh, one thing like with Everyhand or with, uh, Youth Outreach and Hispanic Outreach is that the expectation is that that we do not share student level data with them unless, uh, the child's parent or the child who's eighteen, uh, signs a student release form authorizing particular kinds of data being shared. So, um, you know, that's an expectation. So, you know, that's an expectation that we have, and, you know, and for example, you know, we don't want, you know, that request should be parent-driven, you know, and so the parent should be requesting to participate in those programs and therefore requesting to share the data with people in those programs. That's how it should work. And, you know, so at least we aren't just indiscriminately just sending information to youth outreach saying that, you know, grades for particular students are such and such. You know, we need to rely on that parent release. And I'm sorry, I just probably complicated the whole discussion by bringing that up, but I did want to make that clear, you know, that we do need the parent release forms to give that information to those folks.
Right, you're saying that we need it, and we do do that.
Yeah, the, I think the concern is more of just like general access to data, and I think that's where the concerns are. But the expectation is that if Hispanic outreach wants to work with some of their kids who might have, need help with homework, or English, or attendance issues, or something like that, then the parent needs to sign the student release form indicating that the school district can share that information with Hispanic outreach. And so, that needs to go through, and then the Hispanic outreach employee representative can work, you know, directly with the kids in that way.
Do those organizations prompt the parents, or do we do that? How does that get there?
Yeah, and that's an excellent question. My expectation is that, you know, that we would want parents to lead it. And so, you know, that's the delicate balance as far as, you know, getting the parents to express interest in those organizations.
Okay.
Now, you know, I will say that youth outreach, Hispanic outreach, Hope Coalition have very strong boards and backing in the community. So, for example, Hispanic outreach, you know, has a community outreach effort where they identify people and, you know, encourage them to sign up. One of the issues, though, would be, you know, if there's a family who moves into the district and they want services through Hispanic outreach, and our school people know it, then that's something I think that we have to work on as far as referrals to those organizations.
Okay.
So, and that's, I think, what, getting back to what Holly said is, you know, there are a lot of different related issues with all of this, or issues or topics, and I think we need to strengthen, you know, those particular issues as we move forward. So, and we're committed to do that.
And that melds into my comment, which is that as school districts, we're asked to do an awful lot, and these groups help us to accomplish that. We're dependent on the kindness of strangers to a great extent, and that's who these contracts are going to, people who are helping us try to help our students. And it's, yeah, I'm sensitive to data sharing, not that I know exactly what data might be going out, but I suppose that's the question, what data is going out and who's getting it and what can they do with it? These organizations have all shown themselves to be pretty responsible, as far as I know, and, again, if, it would be great to have an internal unit in the district doing it all ourselves, but we're not, we're not paid enough to do that job. So, that's why we have to go out and ask their help from these volunteer organizations.
Yeah, I think we need to do that, and at the same time, respect the privacy rights of students and their parents. So, you know, we, you know, we need to find the right way to do, you know, this good work with our community partners. And I know that, that, you know, we're doing it every day, and that we're going to work hard to have the best processes possible, but I'll give you a quick personal example. You know, when I first moved here, started the process of a divorce, and, you know, I heard about some, some people back in, oh my gosh, where did I live? Watertown, you know, who were talking about it. And I know some of that information came from school people, and you know what? That's not right. And people should not be talking flippantly about personal information about any employee or any child. And, you know, so I've lived it firsthand, and, you know, we owe it, you know, to our students and parents, you know, to provide that level of respect for them as well. So, you know, and anyway, that's just, that's just one small example. You know, part of the issue here is that we have so many people who really want to help our kids, and at the same time, we're a small town, and people talk. And so, you know, we need to make sure that we're following the letter and the spirit of the law to make sure those privacy rights are protected as well.
Right, yeah, thanks.
Holly?
You put that well, Carson, and those were good questions, Mike. Here's my, here's how I read it. I had a child in the district for 10 years. For those 10 years, I did not know that his data was being shared with outside agencies. Had I known that his data was being shared with outside agencies, I may have opted out. I may have opted in, but I was never given the chance. So, the contracts that we have signed right now that are currently in place, parents haven't been given the notice or the option to opt in or out, however that reads, there's directory information and nondirectory information. There's some just standard the state has access to, but some of the stuff we share isn't. As a parent, any parent, I would want to know, and I still think it's important, and it could be legal, whether or not we share. So, that's, I want clear direction, clear planning on what that looks like. And if we have a signed contract and we all go, yep, we still haven't asked, that's where, that's where it's great for me.
Or I think what you're probably asking, well, one of the things you're asking for, Holly, is a kind of a clear notice to kids and parents. I think that's part of it.
Transparent.
Transparent, yeah, or clear, or both, actual other same thing, but just so that, you know, everyone's on the same page as what happens, so.
Yeah.
That's what you're looking for.
I don't negate any of the work that the outside organizations do, phenomenal people, phenomenal hearts, that's not the point.
Yeah, thank you. I'm just thinking with what Holly said here, and I was wondering what all is here, and I haven't heard that we have a clear opt-out policy for this data. I would just like to request that maybe Carson come back to us at our next meeting with suggestions on how we could have an opt-out, if it's possible, and how to go about implementing an opt-out process for our parents so they know about it. And I'm not going to put it in the motion or anything else, I just think it would be appropriate for us to get a report back on that.
Yep, I can do that, Arlen.
Janie, here and there.
I just had a quick question. How is this related at all to MCAs and how they just disaggregate data and kind of present it in the reports that we get, you know, every year when it comes to that? Can you share a little bit about that, Carson?
Yeah, you know, I'm glad you asked that question because it's, you know, we're obligated to report information to the state, and then, you know, the state disaggregates the data, shares it publicly. I know even, there was a survey done by the state in June or July, you know, as far as distance learning. I wish we would have waited on our survey until the state had done its survey, because, you know, we'd have the results and, you know, comparisons with other districts, but we wanted it done as soon as possible. But anyway, even on the state results, they actually shared the raw data, the raw responses for every person who submitted the survey, except for the name of the student, of course. And so, you could look at, at least at one time, you could look at, I don't know how many thousands of people responded to the survey, but they had one line saying if they, you know, what their racial background was, their special ed stat, you know, all those things that were just listed there. You know, so, you know, but the state, you know, there's a different relationship that we have with the state compared to partner organizations, compared to parents and those kinds of things, and I think that's one of the variables in looking at how to opt out, you know, that Arlen, you know, wants me to look at, is, you know, if a student can opt out of a particular data share, can they opt out of sharing information to the state? You know, I don't think so, but, you know, those are some of the issues that we'll have to weigh as we look, move forward.
And then one follow-up question on that. Again, we shouldn't be reinventing the wheel. I mean, every district should be collecting data, and every district should have some policies in. So, how, did the policy committee look at that at all, or do we have any information on what other districts are doing with this? Because I can't believe that we're the only district struggling with this.
We are.
Yeah, I think it's a big issue, not just in, you know, Minnesota, but probably throughout, because, you know, we have competing interests, and, you know, we all, most of us want to do the right thing anyway. And, you know, so it's a big issue. I've talked to some other superintendents, and I will say, and I'm not going to mention any school names or anything like that, but I do think that there maybe not, some school districts are more cautious than we are, and some school, some school districts are not as cautious as we are. And, you know, my goal is to be as careful and cautious as possible while still providing the needed data to people, so that's kind of what my stance is. And I know I completely avoided your question, Janie, and I'm sorry for that, but, yeah, there are some school districts that are sharing a lot more data than what we do. And if I could add a couple more things, Wheneverhand Join first started, I know that they took this, the confidentiality of data very seriously. I know that some people from Wheneverhand Join went to some Strive conferences or convening sessions where one of the big topics was data privacy, and that kind of led to this, the initial educational data privacy agreement with the school district. And, you know, but I know that even from the onset, they've been very, they've been very concerned and very careful about, you know, that data. Lisa Hanson, who works for Wheneverhand Join, is exceptionally careful, and she's helped us improve our safeguards here in the school district, and, you know, closely monitors that data. And she showed me, I was going to share with the policy group, and then it was just too much, but she showed me their, their plan for the security of their data with the data mart they use, and it's very impressive. And, you know, I was planning to be, well, I was a computer science major in college, but when I looked at that data plan and how they're monitoring it, it's, you know, above my head, and, but it's very well done, I can tell you that. And so, I'm proud to be part of their movement.
Okay, back to the motion that Janie has on the table and seconded by Heidi. Any other further discussion? The motion is to approve the following agreements as presented with I-3 Works, Wheneverhand Join, Hispanic Outreach, Youth Outreach, and Hope Coalition. Any other discussion? All right, we'll start with a roll call vote then with Mr. Christensen.
Aye.
Mr. Derrick's.
Aye.
Ms. Fair?
Aye.
Ms. Jones?
Aye.
Ms. Tower?
No.
Mr. Bryant?
Aye.
And chair votes aye, six one, it passes. All right, the next agenda item doesn't require any recommendation at this time, it's information only, but we are embarking upon the very larger school board or superintendent evaluation. We'll assess the superintendent's work according to the standards suggested by the Minnesota School Boards Association, and we'll look at the progress of goals established this spring. And the superintendent will forward a self-evaluation and a document from MSBA explaining ratings for each standard. The board members will complete an online survey, and then we'll meet with the superintendent on November 2nd to discuss the evaluation, and then we'll provide a public summary for November 16th. I just wanted to remind the board that this process that we went to, we used to do just one evaluation every year, and we went to one full evaluation and then kind of a mid-year progress report. So, we did that mid-year progress report in May, and now we'll complete the full evaluation. We also determined that this was a good set of timing because once we have our evaluation completed, we will begin contract negotiations for the superintendent, and his evaluation, or his contract ends June 30th. So, that way, we have good information to be able to go into contract negotiations. So, that is the background of that. Holly, you had a question?
Will you run through the timeline again for me? I seem to be off.
Thank you.
In the spring, I thought it was the full year evaluation. We went into contract, but I'm wrong?
Yeah, yeah. In the spring, we did just a mid-year evaluation.
Okay.
In November, we do the full evaluation. So, that's the timing that we decided, this board decided, when we had a workshop at the end of January. It used to be the other way around. We never used to have a mid-year evaluation, we just did one evaluation in May.
That's like new, it's.
We did it around because it made more sense in conjunction with contract negotiations. We wanted to have fresh information before we embarked upon negotiations with our superintendent. This way, it gives him or any superintendent in the future enough time to look for another job if we choose to not renew a contract, and it also gives us as a board enough time to seek a different candidate should our superintendent be leaving us as well.
When did we switch it?
We switched it in January.
Okay.
We had a workshop the end of January, and we talked about all sorts of different organizational pieces. We started actually talking about this over a year ago, and then we made a formal decision at the end of January to make this switch.
Can you send me those notes?
I'm sure we can.
Okay, great, thank you.
Yep. Heidi?
Oh, when do you want the survey tool finalized? I'm just trying to, I like a laid-out timeline. So, if you want discussion on the second, you need some time for us to fill it out, collate the responses, and then move forward with that closed session discussion.
Right, I believe that we'll send that out. It's all ready to go, Superintendent Anderson, we could probably send that out tomorrow. We'll give you about a week.
Okay.
Is that enough time for you to fill that out and have it back to me by next, by the end of next Monday? That would be October 26th.
Yep, good, thank you.
And then Mr. Bryant?
Thank you. Heidi, can I?
Thank you. Uh, Heidi, can I ask, uh, not Heidi, Holly asked kind of the question. Um, I thought at workshops, we couldn't make decisions. It had to come before the board for a mother motion. I don't recall a motion changing it to a full evaluation November. I recall conversations, but at workshops are kind of like committees a whole.
Right.
No decisions are made. They have to come before the, the board at a scheduled meeting, a motion and a second. Did we do that?
Who remembers that? I think, I will, I'll have to look back on our notes, but that was the, and maybe it was in December.
I, I don't think you can make decisions at a workshop. You can, you have a discussion and you can't make a motion or second or have, you can have consensus, but you can't have, it's, it's just a time to brainstorm. So let us know before you go for too much farther because yeah, this was back a year and a half ago, we did the full evaluation in uh March or April, whatever it was. So.
Yep, I will dig up those notes.
Thank you.
And make a, let you all know.
Yeah, and I will add that um, I'm glad that we're doing two evals per year. Um, I think most districts uh do at most one uh per year, uh, but we're trying to follow the MSBA uh recommendations with kind of a red wing twist. And so, you know, I'm not sure if it's a mid-year evaluation and a final evaluation, or we just call them two evaluations. Um, you know, um, that, that's up to the board to decide as far as terminology, but you know, at least, uh, at least we're, we're meeting twice a year to discuss my performance and to give me suggestions on how to move forward.
Yeah, I remember the last uh assessment or evaluation was a pared down version. I was like, oh, I think it should be more. Um, but it was a pared down version. I remember that because it struck me, um, because it is a new process and it is recommended best practice by MSBA to just keep in touch as a team going ahead. And so the mid-year one or the formative one is just to say, how are we doing on meeting those goals? And if we're satisfied with, hey, things are rolling along or we've had to make an adjustment, you know, so this didn't get done, you know, like we thought. And then um, I think there are some, oh shoot, and I can't remember really, but I think there's an article in the MSBA leader about doing a superintendent evaluation in, in the COVID context because timelines have gotten wonky. Goals may have shifted because you had so much immediate emergent stuff in front of you. So if you guys want to go back and look through that, I think it was maybe a September, October um leader publication. Um, they say, go ahead, definitely keep your timelines for doing this work, but recognize that in, in the context of a pandemic, things have shifted, but you still need to recognize that, you know, things have shifted or you understand and have that mutual agreement that, you know, this goal isn't going to take 12 months. It's going to take 18 because, you know, COVID happened and so much energy had to go into what the immediate situation was. Um, so yeah, but I remember that the last one was pared down. So this one would be the more robust summative evaluation.
Yeah, and of course, um, Holly and I, and, and I'm sure Pam too, are used to the um evaluations uh done at the end of the school year, you know, because that's when decisions are made as far as staffing, you know, non-renewal of teachers and those kinds of things. Um, you know, and I think, and I don't want to put words in your mouth, Arlen, but I think you brought up uh the idea of, wait a second, you know, it'd be better to do it by calendar year instead, uh, just because of what Pam said, that, you know, the, the board needs to make a decision if, if you're looking for new leadership or not. And um, you know, certainly it's in the best interest of the school board and the superintendent to make that decision earlier in the school year, you know, because then it enables both sides to move forward. So um, you know, I'm really okay either way. Um, um, and it just, and from my perspective, it's just good to have the two different evaluations so we can uh keep touching base throughout the year.
Yeah, it really does benefit the district this timeline too, because the, the competition for superintendents out there is pretty aggressive. Um, so the sooner you know that things are going to change, the better off you are. Um, and in fact, you know, that, that was my discussion with our previous superintendent is, and this, and this was a long time ago, you know, a decade ago, that saying, you know, that pool of candidates, it, it's just better for everyone, the sooner we know where we're, we're at with our, our mutual understanding. Um, and, and he agreed. Um, so we, we had an earlier than what back then, even a decade ago, was a, an earlier than normal announcement, but it allowed the district to um get their legs under them as far as, you know, getting the board, understanding what that process looks like, looking for a consultant, laying out a timeline that included public input and input at all levels in the district. So it's quite, quite an undertaking. So it's to the district's benefit too, I think, this new schedule.
Arlen?
Thank you. Uh, first, uh, in case anybody's listening, when we go on a closed session on a superintendent evaluation, there is not going to be a discussion whether we're going to re-employ the superintendent or not at that closed session meeting. The only thing that happens in a closed session meeting would be evaluating the performance and satisfaction of the way things are being done. From that point, I would imagine that if things aren't going well, it would be, it would be a discussion coming at another meeting or possibly if things aren't going well, the superintendent would say, hey, you know, maybe it's time for a change of scenery. But there is not going to be any, at least not on my part, any decision or any discussion about somebody should leave or anything like that in a closed session. I am not going to do that or be any part of it and I don't think anyone else is. And, but it might be gathered from this discussion that might take place and that certainly will not. Uh, secondly, I know we've discussed this evaluation from last year, when to do each one. I don't honestly recall if we came to a consensus in a workshop that we would go one way or another. Um, but certainly we are not to be making decisions in a workshop and just to get ideas. If we want to move this process along, I would be more than happy to make a motion or, or, or ratify a motion by somebody to have the full evaluation in this next time. It's not on the agenda to make that motion, but we are discussing the evaluation. I think it's totally appropriate to make a motion to do the full evaluation at this next, on the timeline that you've laid out.
Thank you for clarifying that, Arlen. I appreciate that. Um.
Is that a motion, Arlen, or are you just throwing it out there?
I'm throwing it out there. I'd be happy to make the motion. I don't want to force anybody into anything. I'd certainly let somebody else take the credit. If nobody says anything, I probably will make a motion.
Is a motion needed to determine the time of the superintendent's evaluation?
It would, it would just clarify that something wasn't decided in a workshop if we're concerned.
All right, well, then I'll make that motion, Arlen, that we uh take this next superintendent evaluation as a summative evaluation of his work over the previous year.
All right, so you made the motion and I, I think we're just doing that for the sake of cleaning things up because we're not sure of our memory and timelines.
I will second it.
Okay. Mike made the motion and Arlen seconded to move the summative evaluation to November. Is that correct?
Correct.
Other discussion?
Jim?
No, Holly, you were in there first.
Um, I asked to see the notes to review that workshop. So why are we, I don't get how we can move forward on this without knowing what we actually said. To me, that seems premature.
We, we had an evaluation in May and we're having an evaluation coming up. I mean, we've been, I recall talking about the evaluation for quite a while. I, I don't know specifically, but uh, you know, it's coming up. I don't know what difference does it make when uh, when it was not decided on, but when we talked about it and what was said.
It, it, it matters to me, Mike.
Well, this vote would clarify that though, wouldn't it?
After I asked to review the notes?
It, well, whatever. It uh.
I'm just saying, like, is anybody listening? I asked to review the notes.
Well, they should be attached to any agenda on, in the board book, right? So it shouldn't be that hard to figure out.
You want me to review them right now in the middle of the meeting?
Well, I was looking for it. Um, Jim, what did you, your name is.
I'm waiting for Holly's done. Holly may have more. I.
Well, no, I, I, I would appreciate reviewing the notes to see what we actually, that's who we can be clear because it seems like it's just push, push. Let's just take a break here.
I thought we were in a consensus position after that workshop. I'm not really alarmed. We already started down this path toward, you know, the formative one. So the natural step is the summative one at this time.
Right. And I think if there was a question, it should have been raised way before May when we started the mid-year evaluation. That's just my thinking.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Thank you. I mean, we got on this board in, Holly and I got on, Arlen got re-elected in November of 2018. I recall very diligently in our first big evaluation, March or April of that next year, we were told, how can we evaluate somebody that we haven't had any dealings with? And we stood to say, well, we got elected to make those decisions. Now we fast forward, for some reason, we bypassed the uh last November one and did the May one, and now we're doing one in November. And we're not, and we're not going to even take into consider the fact that we have a three or four new members coming on the board in, in January. Three for sure and possibly four. No offense, Pam, Madam Chair. So you're going to take that negotiation tactic for his contract away from those people that have filed to be, put their name on the ballot, 11 people. You've taken that away from those, some of those people that may or will for sure be elected. You've given them away to have any type of fact that we're not going to, we're changing it, the fact that we hadn't, we're just suddenly changing it. And uh, we can talk about all we want back in January about it, but there was no decision to, to go forward with um a November evaluation, October, November. So I, I'll, I'll, I'll just say it just smells. I'll be honest. It just smells that something's being done to get through before um the next election and uh, I will, I will, I won't support it. So um, I think we go back to where we were when we started here and let it be. If you need to do it in February, March, so be it. But we're getting way ahead of ourselves here because it just, it just does, it just doesn't seem right and I'm not going to be part of that and I'm, I'm not going to support it. So you can do whatever you want with your motion, but it's out of line. So I will rest, sit here and either mute or uh, not listen, one of the two. No, I'm just kidding. I'll be listening to everything for sure.
Arlen?
Arlen?
Thank you. I certainly don't want to try to bypass the process, but I am, my recollection is that this was what we all knew was going to go on. I guess the alternative, if I'm, I'm not sure if I'm hearing Jim and Holly right. You don't want to do evaluation right now. Um, as far as new board members coming on, they can make decisions whether to renew a contract or not. That's not what this is, a contract negotiation. This is purely evaluation here at this time. I was saying clarity to what I thought was going on. And if I'm in error, I'm sorry about that. Uh, I was just trying to move the process so we get an evaluation done yet this fall.
Sure.
So we get the two a year because I know that was the consensus of what was going to go on. I don't recall whether there was actual votes.
The only reason I bring it up, Arlen, is the fact that the chair said, well, then we're going to, after the valuation, then we'll go into negotiations. So I think you're taking that out of the hands of the people coming on board. So.
Well, and I.
That's my contention about the fact that you're speeding this up or changing the, the date, the timeline on it around. And uh, um, I'm in the minority, normally am. So you go ahead and do what you think you got to do and uh, we'll deal with it down the road if we have to.
Except that it's not changing the date, but, but also.
There's two dates to the date, so.
But it uh, in the, in the same fashion, if we get three new board members on, what are they going to know about what's been going on in the district? What, what experiences will they have with, with the superintendent? His, his contract is due for renewal or termination. So we need to act on it one way or another. We can't not do it. So we start this evaluation and find out where that takes us. But uh, uh, I don't know how you can expect three or four new board members to get an accurate picture of what is in going on.
Mike, I'm going to jump in. I'm sorry to interrupt you, but my name was in the queue, so I'm just going to do it with all due respect. But um, I also agree that I think we're on this timeline to do a second, you know, a second evaluation in the fall with the, with another one in the May. And so I've honestly been asking for the superintendent's contract to be up, to be getting going since probably last April and May. We are actually behind and that's no discredit to Pam at all, but um, I, we need to get going. I think it's irresponsible that we haven't made a decision on where we're going for leadership in this district. And I am not going to wait till January until we bring it up somehow. Like, I just think we have to know where we're going for our staff, for our students, for our community. And so um, that's no disrespect to whoever gets elected in January. I think that this board being responsible for what our job is and our job is to make sure that we have strong leadership in this district and I intend to make sure that that happens.
Yeah, thanks, Janie. That's, that, that's right. I mean, we need to know, you know, if it's a one-year contract, whatever, it uh, it, we need to have some continuity to, to benefit.
Arlen, you're in the, Arlen, you're in the queue, not, not Mike.
Well, I was responding to a specific comment. Sorry.
Go ahead, Arlen.
Yeah, I, I don't want to have a discussion back and forth with individual members. I want to direct my comments to you, Madam Chair. And I would like to ask you to ask Jim and Holly what they would like us to do if they'd like us to not have that evaluation till we clarify the workshop or whatever, because I will, I am willing to vote against my second, but I don't want to have a back and forth between individual board members. I want to direct my comments to you. I tried to speed up the process to what I thought was already there, but I would like uh, ask that you get from Holly and Jim what their concern is. I know I kind of heard it, but I want it specifically and I will help hopefully support them.
Mr. Bryant?
Thank you, Madam Chair. My contention is you're taking the hand, you're taking, what I heard was you're taking the voices away of the people that filed to run. Let them get involved. Uh, the fact that uh, they put their name down, they should have knowledge about what's going on. They're, they're smart people. I, they have 11 people that have paid their $2 and put their name out there, signs and campaigning. Let them decide what the contract and evaluation is going to be like we did when we first got on the board in 2000, starting in 2019. So that's all I say, you know, but that's what I think. I think we should, you're taking, taking away from the people that are coming forward in uh, less than a month, they could be elected and start serving.
Holly?
In addition, that's kind of how this board has wanted to maneuver. The new people, whatever, you kind of have to say, yes, thank you for that. I don't agree or yes, thank you for that. Good point. Anyways, we're moving on. And so I asked to see the notes to review that. It's not a matter of more than two weeks to take some time to actually review what we said in the workshop and make a plan going forward. It's not like I'm asking, but it really has been that. You, you, two people over here agree with something, three people over here agree with something, and then they squish in the middle. You, you, two people over here agree with something, three people over here agree with something, and then they squish in the middle. So let's just review what we said in the workshop. That's all I was asking for.
Carson?
Yeah, I think it's clear that we discussed pursuing two evaluations per year. You know, if there are current board members who don't want me as superintendent, then, you know, then you just need to say it. You know, instead of coming up with red herrings. And I would also remind the board that we have seven board members, you know, right now. It's up to this board to decide how to evaluate me, you know, for this fall. And then in January, it's up to, to seven people, you know, and I will work for them and work with them on evaluation processes and everything else. But this is the board right now. And clearly, the plan was to have two evaluations done, one in the spring and one in the fall.
And I somewhat resent the comment that I'm playing with the timelines. This was a decision that this board made early on in 2020. This isn't Pam Rose's timeline. This is a board of seven. Whether we remember that we voted on it or not, this is not my timeline. This is our timeline. This is what was decided a long time ago. I think you're right, Holly. I'd be happy to go back and look at those notes. That was right when Lisa started, so I hope we have some decent notes on those dates. There, there's no January or February notes in our board book currently, so we're going to have to dig a little bit deeper to find those. But I really resent the fact that there was a hint out there that this is something that I am playing with, that is absolutely false. And I, I'm appalled that that is even a thought that somebody would think on this board. I'm trying to lead us to a timeline that we have decided as a group. If that wasn't the plan, then I don't know where on earth I would have picked up doing a half-year evaluation in May. Also, we, when we had this discussion back in January, we talked about needing good information from an evaluation in order to go into negotiations. That was a discussion that this group had. Whether you remember it or not, it is a clear discussion that was had by this board. And so that's what we're going off of, and it is not, again, my timeline. It is this group's timeline. So what I'm hearing clearly is that we're going to, that we're going to review notes so that Holly can have her questions answered, and Jim, you can be reassured that this isn't Pam Rose's timeline. And we'll bring it back to the next board meeting. But there will be a quicker turnaround because we have full agendas coming up. And so I want to make sure that we do this due diligence and making sure that we have a good amount of time to do an evaluation of our superintendent. He deserves that. He deserves our attention and our opportunity to evaluate him. Arlen?
Thank you. My recommendation after hearing all this here tonight is there is a motion on the floor that needs to be voted on unless it gets withdrawn. I think it needs to be voted down. No. Review the notes, bring this up at the next meeting and continue on. So with that, I would hope that you would ask for the vote shortly.
Yes. Jim, your final comment, and then we'll ask for the vote.
I don't, I don't know if I take it, the fact that I, that I don't believe, if you're saying that I said Pam, Pam Rose's timeline, I don't recall saying that. So if you're implying that, I, I'm a, I'm not, I'm not agreeing with you, so I'll say something else. So, yeah, the timeline, whether it's your time, you want to assume it's your timeline? That's fine. I can't change your mind on that, but I didn't say Pam, Pam Rose's timeline. So, go ahead. I didn't say Tam, did I say Pam Rose? Yes or no?
You did not say that.
Thank you.
And there is seven board members, Carson, remember that, please.
All right, so can you repeat the motion on the table?
What was that?
Did you have a motion on the table, Arlen?
There was a motion by Mike, seconded by me, to do the meeting. Whatever.
Summative evaluation at this time.
Yeah, I read it back. It was in November.
In November, yeah.
So there is a motion made by Mike and seconded by Arlen to complete a summative evaluation of the superintendent in November of 2020. So we can take a roll call on that. Roll call vote. Mr. Derrick's?
No.
Ms. Fair?
Aye.
Ms. Jones?
Aye.
Ms. Tower? Mr. Bryant?
No.
Mr. Christensen?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. I'll be happy to dig some of those notes out for you, and it looks like we'll continue with the evaluation.
Did somebody say something about minutes in November from the workshop? Did Carson say that? Did you say something about November?
Oh, I think if I recall correctly, the motion was to conduct a summative evaluation in November.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
All right, so the next item on the agenda is to go into a closed session to discuss parameters for labor negotiations. How about if we take a five-minute stretch break and reconvene on the next meeting?
And then before we move to that, if, if, just for the public to know that after the closed session, our only discussion and our only action item will be to adjourn the meeting. So, you know, I don't want people hanging around thinking that we're going to be, you know, doing something else, because, you know, we need to honor that, I think, to the public. So there are some upcoming meetings coming up, and they are posted in the upcoming meeting section of the, the agenda packet.
And we formally have to sign out of this meeting, right, to access the next one?
Yeah, different people do it different ways, but I know that for the past few years, we've been taking a motion to close this session. And then we reopen the session, and then we adjourn.
Yeah, she is, she's.
Right, but technologically speaking.
Oh.
Right.
Do I keep this window active while I open another one?
Thank you. Maybe Lisa can help us with that. Lisa, did you set up a separate meeting for the closed session?
Yes.
So yes, everyone should have received the invitation to a second Google Meet.
Right, perfect. So we'll close out of this and then log into that new one. If you're having troubles with it, either text Lisa or me. You know, she's right next door here, and so we'll figure things out so that everyone is present.
All right, that's all I needed from the tech line.
Arlen has something to say.
Oh.
Yeah, I was just kind of going over this whole procedure here. Now, are we going to go into the closed session window? And then after we get done with that, come back over to this one? Do adjourn, normally what we do, reconvene the regular meeting after the closed session.
Yeah, we reopen it, and, you know, I don't think it makes any sense to set up a whole separate, you know, meeting to do that. So I think if we can just reopen the closed session, and then we'll, we'll just adjourn the meeting right then.
Okay.
So we are not going to come back to this?
No, I don't think so.
It doesn't sound quite right that we can do it that way to me, but.
Well, in, in person, we do it differently, but, you know, I think with this particular circumstance, as long as we agree that there will be no discussion and no other action taken except for the adjournment. I mean, that'd be my recommendation anyway.
And we have, we have to close this meeting, right, officially with a vote?
Yep, yep, and so if someone could make that motion and second it.
I just did.
Second. Mike? And I believe maybe Holly's left this venue?
Yes, she has.
Okay.
So we'll take a roll call to adjourn. Janie Fair?
Hi.
Heidi Jones?
Aye.
Holly is not present. Jim Bryant?
Hi.
Mike Christensen?
Aye.
Arlen Derrick's?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. So we're adjourned. Six, so let's come back at 9:27 on the other link. Can we just take a little stretch break?
Five minutes, please.
Yeah, make it 9:30.